Call the meeting to order? Well, that clock says five of, it's actually seven o'clock. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. Is it seven o'clock, Mrs. Kubik?
Yes.
And I'm going to call the meeting to order. If we could rise just to say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And welcome to our January 12 business meeting for the Board of Education. Happy New Year, everybody. This is our first meeting of the new year. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Fieser for student staff recognition, please.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. I'm coming in around here just so I can see everyone and you can see me, although with my height, usually people don't have trouble with that. So I'm thrilled to be starting the new year, 2015, by being able to do some student and staff recognitions. And I'm going to begin with asking if Fiona Neuss would come up. She's a senior at Foreign High School. Come on, see you in the crowd here. How are you?
Thank you, Dr. Fieser.
Sure. Come on. So let me talk with you about this young woman who's very accomplished. And with her tonight is Mr. Berkowitz, who's the principal of Foreign High School. And unfortunately, the librarian, media library person, Janice Pellegrino, who helped her move to the point of being able to get this award, wasn't able to beat her this evening, but we wanted to recognize her. So let me tell you about Fiona. I assume many of you, including the little kids here, have heard of the Nutmeg Book Awards. Have you heard of that? You've heard of Keldecker, right? Keldecker?
Yeah.
Well, there's also the Nutmeg Book Awards, which are for teams. And they're selected annually, every year across the nation. The Nutmeg Book Award is aimed at encouraging children in grades two through 12 to read quality literature and to choose their favorite book from a list of 10 nominated titles. Jointly sponsored by the Connecticut Library Association and the Connecticut Association of School Librarians, the Nutmeg Committee is comprised of children librarians and school library media specialists. I just realized, I said across the country, and Nutmeg is Connecticut. Forgive me for that. But anyways, I know they're noted across the country because I've been in Ohio and I've seen Nutmeg books. At the high school level, the reading committee, which selects these 10 nominated books that could win the Nutmeg Book Award, is comprised of both adults, librarians, and classroom teachers and reading teachers, and two or three students from across the state. To become eligible, to even be considered as a student reader, students need to apply. They also need a strong recommendation for this position, which Fiona received from Janice Pellegrino. And they need to make a huge commitment, because the obligation that they have to fulfill is enormous, and you'll hear a little bit more about that. This is in order to be considered for selection. Only two or three students from across the state are selected for this honor to become members of the high school Nutmeg Book Award Selection Committee. Serving on this committee is a challenge, yet it's a rewarding experience for the student readers, as it's a privilege to be selected. And Fiona is here this evening because she was selected as one of two or three students from across the state to select the Nutmeg Book Award. She's an avid reader and was up to the challenge that was given to her. She received the written recommendation, as I said, from Mrs. Pellegrino. Mrs. Pellegrino wrote of Fiona's overall love of young adult literature and how she possesses the ability to eloquently express constructive criticism of literary works. These are just some of the strong qualities required for becoming a driving member of the student committee and an outstanding candidate. Fiona was selected for this honor and served on the committee from January, a year ago, to October 2014. So that's 10 months, attending five meetings, and reading between 80 and 90 books during this period of time. That's about an average of 350 to 500 pages to read a week for 38 to 40 weeks, just on top of her schoolwork. After reading the assigned books, lively debates would take place when all of the people on the committee would gather, and, you know, all around, you know, what are the best ones to be selected. At their last meeting, the committee chose 10 books for the coming year. Those books are widely publicized, and all Connecticut students are encouraged to read some of the Nutmeg books. Serving as the student reader on this committee was undoubtedly no easy task, as you heard, given also particularly that the meetings that Fiona had to go to were in different locations across the state. And I remind you, she's a full-time student, senior at the high school. Having been selected to be a reader for the Nutmeg Book Award, which involved giving voice to the selection of books for young teens to read, is a tribute to Fiona's maturity and her love of reading. So we want to congratulate you. We want to thank you for making Milford Public Schools and Foreign High School very proud. Okay? Fiona, I think your parents are here, yes?
My mother. Thank you.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Happy reading.
Thanks, Fiona. Next, I want to call up eight Orchard Hills students. Let me call them up first, and I'm going to ask you to come and kind of line up right here. Joseph Gaetano, Justin Gentalian, Jordan Hines, Isaiah Moore, Nathaniel Saluga, Violet Wilson, David Gaetano, and Sean Au. Let me tell you about these eight students. They are all part of what is called, can you see, the Connecticut First LEGO League. So I had the pleasure of meeting them. I mean, you're going to hear about the competition. I couldn't go to the competition, so I went over to one of their practice sessions, I think, four days, three days in advance, and spent about an hour and a half with them. And it was one of the most delightful experiences that I had. I also want to, before I tell you about this competition, tell you that Dr. Dudley is here, in your honor. You can see him in the doorway there. So let me tell you about this evening. And I need to also recognize the parents who are behind this, Lori and Chris Saluga.
They're running late.
They're running late. Okay, well, hopefully they'll get here. So let me begin by telling you what FIRST means in First LEGO League. It means for inspiration and recognition of science and technology. FIRST is a multinational nonprofit organization founded in 1989 by the inventor of the Segway human transporter, Dean Kamen. Major global sponsors of FIRST include 3M Company, LEGO, and Rockwell Automation, just to name a few. FIRST aspires to transform culture by making science, math, and engineering, as well as technology, cool. Two parents from Orchard Hills, Lori and Chris Saluga, and I really hope they can make it, both MIT graduates, have been searching for an activity they could integrate into the school setting that incorporated facets of technology, math, and engineering, all while still being considered fun for kids. Chris Saluga came across the FIRST LEGO League materials online, researched the program, and believed that it could be a good match for kids at Orchard Hills. So Lori and Chris Saluga approached school principal Dr. Dudley in 2013 with an idea to bring FIRST into the school. With Dr. Dudley's approval, they then made a presentation to the Orchard Hills PTA to start a team, and they received overwhelming support, not only verbal, but also some financial support. So this team of eight students, named Masterminds, got to work in July, building and working on a LEGO robot. They had to create a robot that would be able to push a door open, press a button, swing to the side, and do a host of other tasks. In addition to the robot that they had to create and the tasks that the robot had to be able to perform, they, as students, had to conduct a research project in answer to an annual question. This year's assigned question was, it's like a sentence starter, improve the way people learn about blank. Improve the way people learn about blank. These students chose the topic of astronomy. They used their research to propose an electronic game that would help kids more easily learn about stars, constellations, and the universe. And I have to tell you, when they had to compete, the competition involved not just the robotic piece, where they literally had to maneuver the robot, and it was very strict in as far as where your hands could be placed, and that you weren't able to touch anything once you started, et cetera. But then they also had to do their presentation around answering that question and somehow convince the audience that theirs was one of the best. In November, the team entered the Elm City Robo Fest in New Haven. There, they competed against eight other teams in the region. The Masterminds were awarded the champion award, first time out of the chute. Their top prize in the tournament, due to their outstanding results in that New Haven event, they earned a spot at the state-level event held on December 7 at Shelton High School. At the December competition, this Orchard Hills team placed ninth out of 48 teams. Pretty good for first-time round in the state level. Just as a basis of comparisons, the top team in the tournament was four eighth graders, these are not eighth graders, from Westport, who had been competing as a team for five years straight. So they came up against them, and again, they placed ninth, which is great. It just reemphasizes the outstanding efforts made by these young boys and girls on this team. It was just terrific. So we want to congratulate all. All right. Are your parents here also?
Lori and Chris.
Oh, good.
Yep, Chris.
Line up.
Sorry, we're late, of course.
No, that's all right. These are the parents who were so much instrumental in bringing this program into the school, which is just... ...about all the achievements. And what I want to now do is just congratulate this entire team for a fantastic showing and the wonderful results because of all your hard work. And I know, I was there, I saw the incredible hard work. That day I was there, you wouldn't have believed the frustration, since the robot wouldn't work. Do you remember that? You guys were ready to pull your hair out and figure out what was wrong because it had worked before. But you obviously mastered it, because you then went on to the tournament three days later or four days later and took first place. It was just tremendous. And we want to say very, very much to the Salugas for their not only investment, but investment in the sense of their energy going to Dr. Dudley and bringing forth this program, but they really coached the kids every single week for as long as they practiced and then took them to the tournaments. I mean, they were the ones behind, all of them. But they didn't do it for the kids. I watched. They stood back and kept asking questions, "Well, what do you think is wrong? Well, did you try this? Well, what about this?" And, you know, talk among each other, et cetera. I mean, it was fabulous. So congratulations to them as well. And you guys just did a tremendous job. I want to give you each a certificate, and then I want to ask you to go around and shake everybody's hand, because they would really like to shake your hand. All right? Does anybody want to take pictures of this group real quick?
Great. Exciting.
I want to see a picture of the robot.
Mark, nice name. Congratulations.
Sam Dreschler's mom.
Exciting. Congratulations.
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 Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
No, that's something else.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That's great.
Congratulations.
Mr. Saluga asked if he might say a few words?
Sure. So I just wanted to say very briefly, this FIRST FLO program and then the higher-level programs through middle school and high school, they're fantastic. They definitely convinced me it's something worth doing. I don't see any reason why we can't have a team or multiple teams in every school. A lot of towns do it, so I'd love to encourage that. I'd be willing to help anybody who wants to start a new team. And if anybody, I've heard some people ask about demonstrations of what it's about, we can arrange that. So if I can help in any way, not only in continuing this team, but in starting other teams, I'd be more than happy to do that. All right? Thank you.
And our last recognition this evening is a staff member, and I'd like to ask if Rachel Martinick would come up, please. Hard to see where you were, Rachel. And I believe that Mr. Thompson, who is the principal at Law High School, is here this evening. So we're recognizing Ms. Martinick, who is a technical engineering and communications teacher at Jonathan Law High School. In November, the National Science Foundation recognized Ms. Martinick as one of the top 100 computer science teachers in the country. As a result of her being selected, she was awarded a three-day, all-expenses-paid trip to Washington, DC, to attend a workshop with other teachers that received the award. At that workshop, she had the opportunity to network with other teachers, trade assignments, and also network with computer science professors from prestigious American universities, including Duke, Oregon, and the University of Virginia. She also visited the White House, where she was able to partake in two panel discussions about the importance of computer science in American schools. Panel members included important people from Microsoft and Google, the creator of code.org, and the United States Chief Technology Office, Megan Smith, Officer, excuse me. On the last day that she was in DC, instead of handing out awards or certificates to recognize the attendees for their achievement, the organizers and National Science Foundation decided to give the computer science teachers something they loved much more: robots. She was given a robot.
Two.
Two, okay. Each teacher left with two Spheros, which are spherical robots that you can control through cellphone applications created using JavaScript. You guys have to come and see her with her class. So Ms. Martinick will be implementing these into her curriculum. There's a new course that's being created called Computers, Electronics, and Programming, which will be in the Course Selection Book for 2015, which is next September, which I'm sure many, many, many kids will be signing up for and most likely will be turning students away. So we want to congratulate you on this incredible achievement, how proud you've made Law High School, as well as the Milford Public Schools. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, right? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. And in that new course, for the younger kids, we're using cellphone apps to control LEGO mindstorms robots. So, hey, become a law, you know.
Okay, before we move into student reports, I just, if the students and their parents, if you are, would like to leave, feel free to do so. We're going to have the rest of our meeting. It's up to you. Yeah, you can stay. And I think first up is Jonathan Law for the student reports this month, this summer. Hello.
Hello.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. All right. So in law sports action, our girls' basketball team is doing very well. They have a running six-win streak, and they've only had two losses so far, so we're very proud. We're hoping they will make states. Our boys' team is very excited because they had their very first win last Friday against Guilford. Both boys and girls will be playing, basketball, that is, will be playing against Foreign at Foreign High School this Friday. Girls is at 5:15, and boys is at 7:00. So anyone interested, feel free to attend. Our Milford Indians hockey team has won three of their past four games. And finally, our girls' gymnastics are very proud, as they have recently come off their big win against Foreign, 127 to 99.
But who's counting, right?
Some of our main events in January, Exam Week is this week, and Second Semester will begin next Tuesday, the 20th. The Jonathan Law Theater proudly presents Steel Magnolias. This weekend, the show's on Friday and Saturday night at 7:00 PM, and also Matinee at 2:00 PM on Saturday. Tickets are $10 and can be purchased at the door. The Jonathan Law Key Club has recently completed its annual point set sale and Salvation Army fundraiser. As a fundraiser this year, the Law Key Club sold 104 point setters, and over $3,000 was raised for the Salvation Army. The National Honor Society hosted the Giving Tree once again this year, which was a great success. We collected over 100 gifts for 50 children in the community. Law's Mala U.N. Club hosted their first annual international eatery on December 19 to help raise money for the club's trip in March to New York City. We organized a luncheon of dishes and desserts from all around the world for students and faculty to try during the lunch breaks. We raised over $500. SATs will be administered at law on January 24. Finally, NWEI testing will take place throughout various weeks of January. In guidance, we've had over 61% of our students applying to college, and many have already been accepted, so we're very proud. With the release of the notorious federal aid application, FAFSA, our guidance department has brought in Ms. Holly Granquet, who has been meeting with parents about financial aid questions and options while filling that out. And finally, our guidance department is hosting two sessions, open to all junior parents, where they are basically explaining the various options after high school and how to get started on those. So that will be coming up next weekend. Thank you.
And foreign high school? Oh dear, hovel along. Hello.
So let's start off with guidance. To date, we have 16 active scholarships available, and nine links to scholarship databases on the Foreign Guidance website for all of our seniors to use and hopefully get some money. In addition, seniors are continuing to update the department on college acceptances. Some new schools that students have been accepted to are UMass Amherst, Mississippi State, University of Central Florida, Stonehill, University of Scranton, Fordham, and the Culinary Institute of America. We have 908 total applications processed, and 70% of seniors have one or more applications processed. Also, we have FAFSA health nights on January 13 and 20 at 7:00 PM in the Foreign Library for all the students who need help filling that out.
And in some more general news, we had a very successful spirit week before the winter break, including a pajama day, ugly sweater day, jersey day, my favorite was Throwback Thursday, and then a color wars for the pep rally at the end of that week. We had a very fun winter concert put on by our choir in December. They did an outstanding job. And in addition, our interact club supported a Sandy Hook Remembrance Foundation called the Chase Michael Anthony Kowalski Foundation for the last two years, actually. And this year, they were selling remembrance ribbons all throughout school before break for about two weeks, and they raised approximately $250. So they're very thankful and grateful for all the support they got from Foreign and the Milford community overall. And our unified sports club is hosting their annual basketball tournament in the gym on 2:30 on Wednesday, which should be a great afternoon. And lastly, our Media Center's book fair was extremely successful, and the profits they gained from that, they say are going to be used for getting any books that students request in the upcoming months and school year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move into public comment. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Milford Board of Education personnel or any person associated with Milford Public Schools. Security issues and matters related to negotiations or grievances will not be permitted. Consistent with the principles of Federal Educational Rights and Privacy Act, discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Please be advised that our meetings are broadcast live on Channel 78 on cablevision. Is there anybody who would like to address the board tonight? If so, come to the podium and state your name and address. You have three minutes. No public comment tonight? Okay. Then we'll move on with the agenda. I actually don't have anything to report for the charity court. It's the new year, so nothing's really been going on right at the moment. So we'll move into liaison reports. We have liaison reports. You know, Mr. Whiskeman has. This is Federico. Do you want to go first?
Yeah, I have a report from the Permanent School Facilities Committee. The main discussion of the meeting was around the project at East Shore Middle School. The contractor is working on the punch list, which is, he has said, is about 98% complete. We approved a change order to build a catwalk around one of the HVAC unit on the roof. And at the time of the meeting, we were waiting for a final selection from the principal on the design of a small plaza to be placed by the front entrance. And the project will continue until the plaza and the punch list is completed. That was the majority of me.
Anybody else have... Mr. Whiskeman?
At last meetings, I have mentioned that I had been to ACES, they had given their awards out, and one of the things I had shown was a video. And I wanted to share with you just a few minutes of that video, which gives you a little bit of insight into ACES. And while they're setting the video up, I'll mention that at this past Thursday's meeting, ACES Board did pass the regional calendar for ACES and ACES calendar and for the 2015-16 year. And they will consider the 2016-17 calendar at their next meeting in February. And I think we'll have the hard calendar on our next... But if the superintendent doesn't already have copies signed.
It's my understanding that the regional calendar that was passed this year through ACES, there is still some flexibility, and that in 2016 is when the official calendar goes into place.
That is correct. This year's calendar is flexible. It is suggested that we follow it, but not mandatory. My understanding is for the 16-17 calendar, it is by state law a mandatory. At least, there's still some flexibility, but mostly it's the start date that they're really interested in focusing in on, and most of the holidays with some flexibility. So I don't think it'll be too bad for us, but we can talk about it.
Yeah, in the discussion at our February meeting, we can actually direct Mr. Whiskeman how we would like him to vote when he has that opportunity at their meeting. So we'll talk about that. Okay, are we ready? Just a few minutes of this we're going to watch.
I thought it was going to be a little easier to be a mom, but it's been...
We knew our life was going to be difficult, and it was...
We knew our life was gonna be difficult and it definitely was.
She's autistic and there's a place where she can go where they'll nurture that autistic.
It's unconventional, it's very independent.
It's been very rewarding to see what he's done.
I've had the privilege and honor to work with three outstanding people here, Peter Young, Cheryl Saloon, and Craig Edmondson. Now, they were all unique in their own way, but each of them had a singular goal, and that was to deliver the best education and services that were humanly possible for kids. And that's what they trusted all of us to do.
Things weren't going well and it was a really tough time, but it was hard to make a change. So when someone had recommended that we check out Aces or Village School, at first I thought, oh God, you know, it's in North Haven, we live in Rocky Hill, it seemed like so far away. And as soon as we came to the interview and we met Carol, we... Edit this. As soon as we met Carolyn Rose, I instantly fell in love with them. And I thought, you know, these are real people. They're not just administrators and they're not just principals. And in Andrew's first chair, he was put into sort of the older group classroom, the oldest classroom in the building. And he went to win his classroom. And it's been the greatest place for him. I'm so lucky. And I'm crying because of it, I don't know why. Some of the staff are able to see, almost like see through the window into the student's world, sort of a unique, like eyes of curiosity and compassion to really understand those kids. That's always amazed me. Like, I love being, I love being witness to that. Instantly, they kind of figured him out. Like, they wanted to take the time to figure him out. They wanted to figure out what makes him tick. Why does he say no? What makes him, when he wants to be difficult, why? Why, you know? And then they kind of rolled with that. And I think that was the most important thing, that everyone up until then would get flustered by that and figure out how not to deal with it and to try to move him out instead of kind of focusing on, you know, wow, how can we work with this child? And that's what we do here.
Good, very nice.
Thank you.
So Aces is, can you just give quickly, what, you know, what is Aces?
Well, Aces is the area educational services agency which serves, I think it's 26 districts in this regional area here, and Milford is one of those districts. Each of those districts sends a layess on person to Aces to represent their own individual district and to vote on issues. In one way, it's like another school district because they run a number of schools. A few of these schools are magnet schools and several of the schools are for those who are on the spectrum of various considerations, autism spectrum, they have an autism-specific school, et cetera.
So we have students that go to some of those.
And we have some students who go to those schools. They have an ECA, which is an educational center for the arts, which is a half-day program. And we have several students who go to that school also. So it serves us and I think there's a 42-minute video for the board members who would like to see the entire thing. I would certainly encourage you to see it because it shows you the full spectrum of the services that are available to us when we're in need of those kinds of services. And so I'm very happy to be associated.
Thank you for sharing that, I appreciate it. Right, any other liaison reports? Okay, then we'll move on to Dr. Fieser, the instructional division highlight.
Thank you. Well, you see before you a number of our students here, and they've come to teach us a little bit this evening. Each month, we are trying to highlight something that's going on in the schools around student learning. And this evening, we are graced by a group of students from Live Oaks, and I'm gonna stop and turn this over to Mr. Cummings, who's gonna speak specifically about what they will be doing with us and for us this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Fieser. Good evening, everyone. With us tonight, as Dr. Fieser said, are some second grade students from the great Live Oak School. And with them is their teacher, Ms. Pam Ward, math coach, Sarah Kaminsky, principal, Rose Lacabell, and also with us tonight is supervisor of math and business for the Milford Public Schools, Lisa Swanson. Tonight, the purpose of tonight's presentation is twofold. One, for the past four years now, the board has supported the implementation of the math investigations curriculum in our K-5 system. We started four years ago doing K-2, and since then, we've added a grade each year, this year being grade five. And we wanted to show exactly what math, give you some snapshot exactly of what math investigations is, is a curriculum and the instructional approach it takes. And you're gonna see, I think, tonight, the hands-on involvement that it entails and requires and how it engages students in the work. The second part is the technology. The board, through its budgeting, has supported the addition of smartboard technology in each of our classrooms at the 1-5 level. And this year, we added those smartboards to the grades 1 and 2 classrooms. And it is only, not even quite halfway through the year, but I think our students are gonna put the rest of us to shame with their ability to manipulate that board. The board you see tonight is different than the board. We didn't use our board because the board that we have, the board for the Board of Education purposes, is actually outdated and old. Although it looks good. The board that we borrowed tonight from our vendor has a more adaptive technology. It allows more students to engage with the surface and therefore work with each other using the technology. This is the type of board that is now in our classrooms. So I will be quiet and I don't know, Pam, you or Sarah, wanna start?
Yes, sir. They're finger pointing. This board is very similar to the one we have at school, but it does have a little bit of differences. But I think that children probably will adapt pretty quickly to it. The coolest part is that they actually have a real eraser, so I think that's really cool. But this is a typical lesson, truncated, you know, condensed for time. But they would start their math lesson with a morning routine or today's routine that we're doing. So this is very similar to what we would do each day. So I'm gonna ask one of these loud boys' children, pretend you're at recess, to read what today's number 45 says. Gianna, you wanna do that?
Right, and expression is that equals 45.
Good job. Give me a thumb up if you understand what your directions are. Awesome. Joshua and Devon, can I have you come up and remember what your rules are for today's number? Each of you can take a pen, because this board can have two children working at the same time. And see if you can give an expression that equals 45 using only addition and multiples of 5 or 10. Wow. If you could each stand to the side, I'm gonna have Joshua prove to me that his answer is a today's number equaling 45. Joshua, can you read us yours?
10 plus 10 equals 20, plus 20 equals 40, plus 5 equals 45.
Perfect. Awesome. What I think is really cool, Devon, read us yours.
20 plus 10 equals 40, 30 plus 10 equals 40, 40 plus 5 equals 45.
What's really cool is it doesn't matter what order the numbers go in, you still ended up with 45. Carly, could you do me a favor and take a pen and give us a different way? Thanks, Devon and Joshua. Awesome. I love how you proved your answer. We'll have to do some proving. What does it mean?
Well, 40 plus 5 equals 45.
That is pretty cool. I couldn't have done that better myself. That would have been what I chose. Brandon, can you show us what you've done? Well, Brandon, tell us what you decided to do.
5 plus 40 equals 45.
Wow, I'm so glad that at 9 o'clock in the morning, we come up with some really, really challenging things. Allison, you wanna give it a try? Give us a good one. These guys are awesome and they proved their work to us. Allison, what was really cool is I saw you double checking your work as you were going. Can you prove to us that that equals 45?
Well, 15 plus 15 equals 30, then 30 plus 5 equals 35, and then 35 plus 10 equals 45.
Cool. How did you get that 15 plus 15 equals 30 so fast?
Because you have the two 5's equal 10, and then you have two bundles of 10 already there, so that you know that equals 30.
That is awesome. Awesome, awesome. Is there anyone I missed? Gianna, come shine a light.
Read it. I wanted somebody to use that eraser.
Now you're gonna have to prove your answer to us.
10 plus 5 equals 40, and 15 plus 15 equals...
What does this equal, this part right here? So if you took 20 and then you took that part, what would be?
30.
And now, what's that? Good job. We'll get you to 45. Good job. Excellent job. What I think is really cool is that you also all learned how to reverse all the add-ons. I liked how you were double checking what Devon did and what Allison did to make sure that you had yours. And just for our board members, Brandon, can you come up here and use your fist on this board? And start erasing. So there are all sorts of cool tools and I can't express to you enough how much the interactive piece of the smartboards, I can't live without it. Thank you.
Sure. Alright, after our morning warm-up, we usually follow with a lesson. And our lesson today, oh, thanks, dude. That's alright. We're good. Our lesson today is gonna be a problem-solving mini-lesson for you. So we've been focusing on problem-solving strategies and ways we can solve problems using multiple strategies to show our flexible thinking and our deep understanding of what the questions are asking. So we've been following the high-five problem strategy. And we always put up our five fingers, right? Okay. And when we put up our thumb, what does that mean? Who can tell me? Carly?
She understands.
Tell me more.
We understand the problem and what we're gonna do.
We understand the problem, what we're gonna do. Can anyone add-on to what Carly was just thinking? Gianna?
We read the problem and we understand if it's adding or subtracting.
So we kind of understand after reading the problem whether we're gonna have to add or subtract. Sometimes we might have to do both, right? Or more than one step? Alright, then when we put our first finger up, we're ready to do what? What does this show the teacher? What is this, what are we thinking when we're on our first or second step, really? Devon?
A plan.
What do you mean by that?
I'll be thinking what strategy to use.
Like what?
Number lines.
Oh, like maybe using the number lines. We have a plan in mind. Does anyone have another idea for a plan that they might have when they solve a problem? Joshua?
That you could write it down.
Using our pencil. Pencil and paper is definitely a plan. What are some other plans that we might use? Some other strategies we might use to solve problems? Carly? A hundred chart? Gianna?
Sometimes you can use negative numbers.
Sometimes you can use negative numbers. What do you mean?
It needs to be, like, the one that we've been working on is 42 minus 48.
So if you have a problem that has tens and ones and two numbers with tens and ones, how would I know I would need negative numbers?
Cause, like, 2 is less than 8, so you're gonna need all the ones here.
So if I have to take away ones from my other ones and I might be less than zero, maybe you could show us that today. Okay? Third step to solving a problem is to actually?
Solve.
Solve it. Get our paper out and solve it. Do we all have to do the same strategy?
No.
Same plan? No. And then what do we mean by math words? Allison?
Labels.
What does that mean?
Like, you need to have labels on your word because if you don't have labels on your word, you can't, you don't know what you need to do.
And I always tell you, it's like when I send Mr. Kaminsky to the store, right? And I say, "Go get me 4." He's gonna say, "4?" What? All math words, all math numbers, we need labels, so we need to know what we're talking about. Great. Can we add a sentence sometimes to make it super detailed? Sure, precise, right? We wanna be precise. And what's the last step? When we're all done, we're ready for our high-five. Brandon?
We check our work and then we can show it two ways.
So one way, we can show it one way, and when we're all done, we can show it another way. Are you ready? Okay. Let's look at our problem. First step, understand the problem. Can you quietly read this problem to yourself? I'll read it aloud, just in case everyone can't see it. Daniel's mom made 42 cupcakes for Daniel's birthday. She sent 28 of them to school for Daniel to share with his friends and teachers. The rest will be saved for Daniel's baseball team. How many cupcakes will Daniel's baseball team get? Could you read it twice? What? No? One more second. Alright, what do you understand about this problem? Tell me if you understand something. Thumbs up? Devon, what do you understand? Oh, Devon said we could use subtraction for addition. Anybody else wanna add-on? Talk more about what Devon's saying or have another idea? Brandon? Brandon said the main equation that's going to represent this problem is 42 minus 28 equals... Do we agree? Show Brandon that you agree with him. The agree symbol. Anything else we wanna talk about, what we understand? What are we trying to find out here? Carly, what are we trying to find out?
We're trying to find out how many cupcakes for Daniel's baseball team.
Okay, so the cupcakes. Okay, so the cupcakes... Left, right? Do you have a plan?
Um, I think, we only have that subtraction.
Yeah? We're gonna have all the tools that you would always have available here for you.
Josh is going to do...
What are you gonna do, Carly?
What's yours, your plan?
Oh, that.
Carly, what's your?
My plan is doing subtraction on...
Subtraction on a hundred chart. Anybody have a different plan? Devon?
Um, I think chunks.
Oh, subtracting in chunks. What do you mean by that?
Uh, they...
Tens and ones in chunks? Okay. Allison?
Strips and singles.
Strips and singles. What do you mean by that?
Um, a strip.
Cause they're all going, "What? Strips and singles? What does that mean?"
A strip has ten, um, um, squares in it and a single is only one.
So you're gonna think about actual tools that you can manipulate, strips and singles. Okay? Brandon?
Negative or, uh, number line.
You're gonna use the number line? Negative numbers. You think you can use it for this one? All right. Anything different? Josh?
Hundred chart with addition.
So we have two people using hundred chart, but one's gonna use the subtraction and one's going to do it with addition. So I think it's time, I think you're ready. Right. Okay. So we're gonna give you your whiteboards and a few of you are gonna come up and show your strategies on the board. So typically, all the students on the carpet would all be engaged, they would all be solving the problem. Then we can call a few children up to interact with the whiteboard while everyone else is working. So it kinda gives accountability for everyone. And I think I would like... Josh, do you think you'd be able to come up and go up here first? Okay. Let's see if we hit it one more time. There we go. So Josh, when you're touching, can you just tell us what, why you just chose to touch twenty-eight?
Because I'm gonna use addition and that's what you need to start with.
Do you think you could add an equation to show your book? Okay. We also talked about hundred chart and number line. Those are representations, but we also wanna show it in equations. So we can show our thinking steps. We talk about it being almost like a recipe. So he just showed you the cake, but now he's showing you how he made the cake. And while Josh is writing his equation... Good. There you go. It's okay that they're different colors. Kind of color they like.
I love how you did that, Josh. You put that missing number in there. So now we have to figure out what that missing number is. How are you gonna do that for us?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Remember, you started on your twenty-eight. Do you count your twenty-eight?
Count.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Now Joshua, you're figuring that out. What would have happened if you were on twenty-eight and you went down to ten more? Where would you have ended up? Could you show me that equation? Twenty-eight plus ten equals thirty-eight? And then when you went from thirty-eight to forty-two, how many more did you need?
Four.
Can you do your thirty-eight plus four? That's awesome.
How are you guys doing down here? Good? If you're done, what can you be doing?
How are you gonna mark and label your work? Nice job, Josh.
And Gianna? Can you turn and explain your thinking?
So, I took the tens out first.
Took the tens out first, so we saw forty-two is forty and twenty-eight was twenty?
Mm-hmm. That equals twenty. So then I went on to the single and it was twenty-fourteen. But two is less than eight, so I had to go over it and go negative six. And then I went back and added twenty-six.
How come you didn't add six?
Cause I don't have a six, let me.
Oh, you don't have a six, cause you do a negative number, right?
So I just went away from six and then added four.
And I like how she added cupcakes left for the baseball team. It tells the teacher that she's very precise and she knows exactly what she's solving for. Nice job, friends. Let's see. Maybe we could squeeze a few more up there before time is running. Oh, Brandon, come on up and show your number line. And at the same time, you're gonna reach around him and drag some of your strips and singles. We might have to use the word excuse me a few times. You can write your equation for us. Or you can... Carly, you can do your hundred chart. Oh, actually, I don't think you'll be able to touch it. You can try. Let's see. So with Carly and Josh, they both used the hundred chart, but they used it a different way. It's okay. Don't worry about the color. If you wanna erase, you just touch it again. All right, Brandon? Explain your thinking. Cause I know what I was learning math. I did not learn it this way. And so I bet they didn't learn it either. You have to explain.
So I started at forty-two and jumped over to thirty-one and got to forty.
Took away ten and got to thirty-two?
And I took away another ten and got twenty-two. Then I equated two to get twenty. And I took away sixteen to get fourteen.
Nice job, Brandon. You also got to fourteen?
Yeah.
Can you draw them instead of dragging them right now? Just lines. Maybe you could do that while Carly's working her magic over there.
She's got it right on the board. She just needed to figure out what she did here. Perfect. Take a look at your board, honey.
I just took away, like, I forgot I was like...
Now you wanna do your equations, honey. What did you do here? Three, two, ten.
So Allison's doing the strips and singles, which is tens and ones, something that we do in our investigation program, base ten blocks.
You can use it. I think you're okay, Carly.
Okay.
It's different than ours. You're okay. Too many, too many chiefs down, nothing needs.
All right. Wanna explain?
So forty-two minus twenty-eight equals fourteen?
And no, because?
Because it, it's like using addition. You can, you can like plus the twenty-eight with fourteen and eight plus four equals twelve.
Did you do addition or did you subtract?
Subtract.
All right, so what did you do? Just tell them exactly what you did. What does this X mean?
I took that away.
What's that?
Took two tens away.
Ten, twenty.
And then I took away two singles and then six singles. And then that left me with fourteen.
There you go. Oh, and she's adding her equations. Like I said, with representations, we wanna make sure we add our numerical equation. Here's Carly in a minute. Persevering.
Double check. That's great.
And I know you wanna add your labels and the rest, but I'm gonna have you stop.
Okay, I'll let you do it. Do it, do it so quickly because we're awesome, but I'm sure there are other things on the agenda.
They can't not be precise because precision is one of our math standards. They have to be precise, as you can see. At the end of a lesson, teachers used to create their own charts on chart paper and then we would hang them up all around the room. And now with Smartboards, we can be interactive and we can make our own charts right on the Smartboard. So we'll quickly do that, really quick. I think we're just gonna have... The two people who didn't get to go up to the board are definitely Devon. Devon, can you go ahead and write your strategy so that we can refer to this chart another day?
Sarah, while they're doing that, Pam, could you talk a little bit? Or Sarah, could you talk a little bit about the difference now, you know, having, having taught math prior to math investigation? Can you talk a little bit about specifically the changes you've seen in the students' ability with number sense?
Their number sense, they understand what they're talking about. Like, I picture that we feel very much like in a fishbowl right now, but this goes without much teacher direction. They choose a strategy. They know which strategy is most efficient for them. And we try to make sure that they're comfortable with my way of doing it as a teacher is not necessarily the best way because whichever way is the best for you to get the efficient, correct answer is what works best. So if I'm, I know that I'm a tens and ones kind of person and I like to use the negative numbers and things, but if that's not an efficient, efficient strategy for them, then they need to find something else that does get them to the accurate, correct answer. So I can see they have a better number sense. They're not so roped into, this is the way you do it, this is the way we do. Do every single math problem has to be done this way. One of the things that I think is most cool is there are kids who just do not like to subtract. They never have to subtract. They know that they have addition as a reverse operation, that they're able to say, you know what? I'm stronger with addition, so I'm gonna find my answer by using that strategy. And I can double-check using subtraction, but if I don't like it as much, I can still prove, prove my math through addition. And I think that that's probably one of the biggest things. And the whiteboard, I mean, the Smartboard, I can't tell you how incredible it is for every lesson. It's never off in my room, whether it's math or, or anything else. I don't even know how to use paper anymore. And it's, it's, this is a woman who, twenty-two years ago, when I started and they said, you know, you're going to be receiving everything by email now. And I said, oh, yeah, that's gonna work. You know, so I'm not, I'm not technologically savvy in the least and I'm not, and I'm not saying I'm resistant to change, but it can be a little, on the ornery side, with whether that's going to work or not. And this, I took to, like a fish to water. It is easy to learn. These ladies and gents are savvy as all get out. And because they're so technologically savvy themselves, it engages them in every single aspect of our day. I mean, I can't, I invite you all to come into a full-blown, twenty-two kids sitting there doing it. And it's amazing how interested they are in each other's education and how they can critique their own work. Oh, you don't wanna do that because of this and I can prove it to you this way. It's really nice for them to be able to see another child's work and be able to critique it and say, I would've done it a different way. Let me show you how. But they both come up with the same answer and neither one is more correct than the other. So I, you know, I hope that... Sorry if I diverge.
I don't know, so if the board members have any questions for either the teachers, Ms. Lockeville, Ms. Swanson, or even the students? Especially the students.
Especially the students.
Yes. I have a question. Oh, first of all, I thought the students did an excellent job. But I just wanted to ask, is this the type of lesson that's going on in every classroom with classroom teachers? Or is it just when the math coach is present?
Oh, no, no, no. This is, this is every day. I mean, if, I insisted that Mrs. Kaminsky and she insisted I come too. But if she's not there, I'm doing this every day. If, if she's there, we're team, we're co-teaching it. It's, and, and she's invaluable, the math coach going and making sure that everything goes as planned. But no, it should be every day, every classroom.
Okay.
I think at the beginning, some teachers were a little nervous to use it. So the coaches were really good at going in and modeling how to pull it in and how to find the investigations routines right online, things like that. So we were really instrumental in the modeling of that.
Okay.
And now I never give her the pen. She never has it.
When are the different strategies introduced to the children?
Right away.
In first grade, kindergarten?
Yes. As they develop and they start to come up with the strategies, they are really sharing those, starting in kindergarten. We do number line. We definitely would do something with, you know, just cubes. They're, they're pretty savvy on the hundred chart by first grade, jumping by tens. So it just sort of builds as their development and understanding.
Dylan, can I just show, hold up your board? Because this is, this is a typical... She's awesome at this. Where if she gets done with what she's doing, she finds another strategy. And that's, you know, just being able to, to find that second strategy. And if she were given a bigger board and more time, she'd find a third and a fourth. I mean, they're never, not engaged. They automatically are like, okay, I've done that. Oh, I didn't even think to use a number line or the negative numbers, which, you know, one of the things years ago was, oh, there isn't a number below zero. And we all know there is. And just because you're in first grade or second grade doesn't mean you can't understand that. You just have to know what that means and how to use it and when it's appropriate to use. And I didn't do it in second grade. I know I didn't do it in the second grade. And now it's, it's, if it makes sense and you're able to understand it and explain it, then by all means, go ahead and use it. Nothing is, is not allowed, so.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I just wanna thank the teachers, Ms. Lockeville, Ms. Swanson, but the students, well, and the parents coming out tonight supporting this. It's been a big help, I think, for all of our education. Thank you very much.
Okay, start?
Yep, I think so.
I know that's a little unusual that we would have had a program like that in advance of sharing the budget, but actually it was kind of neat. You know, from my perspective, from the point of view that a budget is really a statement on what it values and what it feels is important on behalf of student learning. This is an education budget, and certainly it involves Milford's teacher, and we just saw an example of that with the Live Oaks students. So with that, let me just say thank you for the opportunity to present. I offer an opening thought here. This is one of my favorite quotes. Quan Chong is an author. I'm sure some of you have seen this before. If you plant for a year, plant a seed. For 10 years, plant a tree. If for 100 years, teach the people. When you sow a seed once, you will reap a single harvest. When you teach the people, you will reap 100 harvests. So what I'd like to hope is that what we are doing through our budget and the work that we are engaging in the system is that we are moving toward 100 harvests for the city of Milford, the school system. So with that, I want to begin with the Board of Education priorities. The Board certainly is familiar with this set of priorities, and you just adopted them, I believe, in November. Four priorities, wand around our schools being safe and orderly and caring places that promote student learning and positive relationships. A second one, that all students would have access to and engage in, rigorous learning, and that would take place in every classroom. Teaching and learning would be supported by our leaders, who would be present on instruction, by also sound professional development, by professional learning communities within our schools. And again, all rounded in best practice. And lastly, that parent and community and business relationships would be built and supported, because we recognize that those kinds of relationships really help to increase learning for all students. The budget that I'm going to bring forward to you has many challenges. And it involves, it's, you will see that it involves it supporting significant changes that are going to occur in the school system. The fact that we are coming forward with a 2.19% increase over last year, I will go on record as saying, I think is remarkable, and it's very responsible in light of, and you will see, in light of the needs next year going forward. On this chart, you see the budget, proposed requests that the superintendent since 2005 has brought forward, and then the adopted budgets. Self-explanatory, but you can see the last few years has been very low. It's up a little over last year, but again, you'll see the challenges that we're facing. When we began the development of the budget, we always have a set of principles that guide us, and you can see these. Of course, student learning would be the most important. We take into consideration the whole child, academics, but beyond academics, knowing that it's really important. Professional development for both teachers and administrators, safe buildings, and then the recognizing that individual buildings have different needs, and that needs to be honored within the budget itself. There are three primary budget priorities in the budget that we bring forward before you. One is the elementary reconfiguration. And you will see it, it's the biggest piece of the requests that are being made. The second, some academic priorities, as well as operational improvement and development, and then security and climate pieces as well. So getting into the specifics, I'm going to begin with the elementary configuration. And the Board knows this, but just to refresh the public's memory, in October 2014, the Board of Education voted to restore a K-5 configuration in the elementary schools, to establish preschools in at least three of our buildings, and then to redistrict the schools with the goal of greater balance, enrollment-wise, greater balance. We fully support the decision. What I think needs to, the public needs to understand is this is, it's an enormous task. It's also a very complex task. Some may think, well, you know, you have, this partner school, just return them to what it was six years ago. First of all, six years ago, there was one more school. And secondly, our populations have shifted the last five years. And again, honoring the request on the part of the Board to balance the schools, et cetera. It's just more complex. I also have said on more than one occasion that I don't view this move as going back. I view this as looking forward to pre-K through five schools, and that the pre-K through five schools that will be opened in September will be very different than they were six years ago. Some differences, we have a solid new language arts and math curriculum in place that will be implemented in all of the schools. We have computer labs in all of the schools now. We have richer classroom libraries, classroom libraries, much richer than they were six years ago. We also have library media centers that are much, much richer in as far as their collections. We have a much more robust music program in all of our elementary schools. We also have a small cadre of literacy and numeracy coaches. You were just introduced to one of our math coaches who works in each of the schools. And we have in four of our schools, teacher leaders. And when we look to moving to this K-5 configuration, what we feel is really important is that we ensure equity in program and resources across all eight elementary schools. So the specifics, we're going to begin with classroom teachers and support folks, so these are salary positions. For the elementary reconfiguration, we need a 19.5 additional teachers, over and above what we have in the elementary schools right now. We need 16 regular classroom teachers, and we need 3.5 specialists. The specialist being, for example, music teachers, PE teachers. You may ask why. It is what we call economy of scale. We now have all of our grade levels in four schools. For example, all kindergarten are in four schools, all third grades are in four schools. We are now taking those same students and spreading them across eight schools when we move to the pre-K through five configuration. And because of moving students across, inevitably, it's going to require more teachers. So that's the reason for the additional 16 regular ed teachers and 3.5 specialists. We are also requesting four teacher leaders. We put into place two years ago, teacher leaders in four of our elementary schools. And we did that when the new teacher evaluation system came into place, and of course, we were, you know, a common core, was certainly very much front and center, new curriculum, et cetera. And it was so clear that our principals in the elementary, there are no assistant principals, there are no release time folks, et cetera. The burden that the principals were facing was enormous, and we put them in the largest buildings at the time, with the goal of having a teacher leader who is a full-time teacher, released of their teaching duties, provide support for managerial and operational pieces within the school, as well as helping, working with teachers in, for example, professional learning communities, or a grade level meeting, or with student assistance teams, et cetera. What we've come to realize is, is that that position has become invaluable in as far as freeing up the principal to really work side by side with teachers around curriculum and instruction. There are, there is no way we could be making some of the gains that we're making in our schools relative to implementing a new curriculum, had we not been able to have principals really be in our classrooms to the degree that they are. And in those schools, which were the largest schools, I don't know how they could have done it. I will give you an example that last year, John Smith at Kennedy School did 106 classroom observations himself. He doesn't have an assistant principal, he doesn't have a supervisor, he did 106 classroom observations himself. He would never have been able to have done that without his teacher leader, who was there to pick up on a lot of the other things that would have pulled him away from the classroom. So what we're asking is that we would have a teacher leader in each one of the elementary schools. The demands on the principals, actually, principals K-12, it just continues to increase. There are good demands, because so much greater focus is being given to curriculum and instruction, and we are recognizing more and more through research, that after the classroom teacher, the number one person that impacts on student achievement is the building principal. But we really need to provide that support. So we're asking for those teacher leaders in other four schools moving forward. And then we're asking for four media aides. If you recall, we asked for these media aides in last year's budget, but they had to be, they were cut, so we are asking for them again. Right now, we have full-time media aides in the three through five schools, we have only part-time media aides in the K-2 schools. We really need full-time media aides in all of the elementary schools moving forward. These media aides are helping teachers as they learn to integrate more and more technology into their teaching. They are working with computer labs and, you know, making sure that those labs are up and running. They are helping with the testing that is, that would be going on, everything that's online, et cetera, and providing all kinds of other kinds of technology support within the individual schools. So those are classroom and teacher supports. There are some other salary requests. I want to make sure I underscore, these are one-time only costs tied to the reconfiguration. First is overtime. We know that we are going to need additional help in longer hours on the part of some of our folks in order to do what's necessary to change the schools to K-5 moving forward, pre-K through five. We know that it's going to require more time on the part of our custodial staff and our maintenance staff. We also know that it's going to require some more time on our school secretarial stuff. The elementary schools do not have 12-month secretaries. What we have built in is that we would be able to bring secretaries in for two additional weeks over the summer, as, you know, again, to help with some of this transition. We are also asking for, we also know that there will be a need for overtime for, with IT temporary help in the summer. We always have IT help, but we're going to need more IT help. This is just to do moving of lots of equipment, computers, et cetera, to ensure that the eight pre-K through five schools are, there's equity in as far as the technology resources that are needed. So it's a lot of moving, it's a lot of setting up, et cetera. And the other thing that we have decided that we would like to do, normally kindergarten children and any other new child who registers in the elementary schools from the spring through the summer would go to the individual school to register, given the fact that we have four schools right now that are not K through five schools, they're three through five. Meanwhile, the other schools are K-2 schools. We felt that it would make it much easier for parents and clearer for parents if we had a central registration. So we want to hire a secretary for six months from approximately April through September, and anyone who wants to register in the elementary schools would come to Parsons and do central registration here. And just then, that's one less thing that the schools have to worry about with respect to registering. Plus, you know, the questions, because of the redistricting, what school am I going to be in, et cetera, that that's all handled through a central registration. So those overtime costs, this is all overtime, and the secretary piece, are $115,000. And again, these are one-time costs. After this year, they are not needed. We also have some non-salary requests, and I will underscore that these are also one-time costs tied to the reconfiguration. Moving expenses, you remember that, well, you may not remember, but some of you may remember that six years ago, it cost approximately $300,000. This is just for the moving contractor, the actual move itself with the trucks to move everything out of the buildings. We put $350,000 into a non-laxing account toward reconfiguration, and our thought was is that it would really cover the moving expenses, but we took some of that out. The Board took a portion of that out, $45,000, I believe, for Mylone and McBroom to do the reconfiguration. So we've put in an extra $50,000 into the budget to cover that piece, so that we're anticipating the cost will again be about $300,000 for moving. There are some building projects that we know that will have to occur as part of reconfiguration. So for example, there are preschool classrooms are going to be moved into some schools that they haven't existed in, so we know that there are going to be some classrooms that are going to have to be repurposed. And that may require some projects occurring, you know, maybe redesigning a classroom or having to either create some walls or take some walls down, et cetera. So we put $50,000 in for that. There's some management information systems kind of things that have to occur, wiring and some other pieces. So we built that in, and again, this is tied to the reconfiguration. Instructional supplies, you may say, why? You know, $92,000. Well, I want to remind you that we have 16 new classroom teachers who will be coming in. All 16 of those teachers need all the curriculum, they need all the instructional materials themselves, they need all the, you know, if we have science kits for each of the classrooms, they're going to need additional science kits, et cetera. And the same for the specials, there will be some supplies that would be needed there as well. This also is, we talked about the rich classroom libraries, classroom libraries. Any elementary classroom that you go into, you will see lots and lots of books. We need to purchase more books for these classrooms that don't have classroom libraries. Our library media collections, we need to purchase some more library books, and that's to equalize the library media centers and to make sure that they continue to be rich collections as they are now. I sat with a group of parents before the holidays in one of the library media centers, it was in a 3-5 school, and said to them, okay, I mean, there were library books all around. I said, do you expect us to just sort of divide it in half and say, this half goes here, and this half goes here, and then do the same thing with the K-2 school and bring those books in? When that means then there's going to be fewer numbers of books maybe for kids, or maybe fewer series. You know, we want to make sure that the libraries in every one of the eight schools is as rich as they are right now in our K-2 and 3-5. So that's the additional books there. Musical instruments, you may wonder about that. I give the example of, if I was principal in one school, I might have sufficient number of violins, violas, a bass, a cello, no problem at all. Meanwhile, the school that's the next school over doesn't know cello, no bass, and maybe only has half of the violas that I have. Well, are we going to live with that? You know, or are we going to ensure that there are sufficient instruments in each of the schools so that there can be a decent orchestra in each of the elementary schools and a decent band program? Furniture and fixtures, very little, but you know, there may be some new desks that have to be purchased, you know, chairs, et cetera. And then professional development, that professional development, again, this is all one-time only. We know there are some teachers who are going to be teaching in new grade levels, and they have to learn the curriculum, new language arts curriculum, new math curriculum in particular. So there's professional development that has to occur. So there's professional development that has to occur in support of them. But again, one-time costs. So what you see is, is that the total amount being requested in support of the elementary reconfiguration is just under $2 million. It's $1,937,000. Of that amount, $427,000 are one-time costs. The good news, however, is, is that most of the other reconfiguration costs are going to be covered through reallocated dollars, and you'll see that as we move forward. Again, we came in at a 2.19%. Had we not been able to find other dollars in the budget to, to offset these amounts, the increase would have been significantly higher than what we were able to come in I talked with you about the fact that beyond our reconfiguration, there are other, you know, academic and student learning needs that we want to pursue. We are always wanting to engage in continuous improvement, and both in our classrooms as well as overall in our schools and strengthening our operations. Some of you have seen this quote before, Richard Elmore, "Improvement consists of increasing in quality and performance over time, but increases in performance result from increases in quality." So there are some things that we are going to be asking for, and we want to remind you of what our ongoing work is and has been for the last few years or more. We continue to revise our curriculum every year. We develop and refine our assessments. We are integrating technology, as you know. We've been able to purchase with your support much, much more technology and, and wanting more and more teachers to be comfortable with the technology and really use it as part of their, their teaching and kids as part of their learning. Professional development certainly is something that's very much a part of our work and building the capacity of our leaders, because again, we are seeing more and more, they are critical to raising student achievement. So the academic improvement pieces that we're asking for, we're asking for two academic support specialists. We actually had one of these last year, and then with the budget reductions, we didn't pursue it. This would be one specialist at law and one at foreign. These positions would be housed in a new academic support center that would be created in each of the high schools. The teachers who, who serve in this capacity would be, have certification in math and, and English. I don't want you to think that it's a full-time person that's going to be filling it, but it's the equivalent of a full-time person in, in each of the schools. They would be serving identified special education students, but they would also be providing intervention to students of regular ed, kids who are falling down. For those of you that were here when the special education review was done two-plus years ago, one of the, well, if you want to say recommendations that came forward from that was a real need to strengthen our interventions in math and language arts in both the middle and the high school. We've made some real great strides in the middle school, we really need to do more in the high school, and so this is a step toward that. We are asking also for appoint two guidance counselor for the academy. This is something we also asked for last year. We are, we, we know that the guidance position in the academy is, is, is a full-time position. There are, the academy, and you'll hear a little bit more about this, but the academy has, is committed to getting, if possible, every single student to graduate, but beyond that, getting students to go on to college, getting students to, to enroll in technical programs, getting students solid jobs if they're not going on to school. The counselor works with students in that capacity, works with students in setting up internships, works with students in, who transitioned from the academy, I mean, from the high schools into the academy. They also work with kids who might transition back to foreign or law. They also work with students, this person also works with students in the GED program, which is part of adult ed, and we just really believe the $12,000 that's needed to make this person full-time is really worth every dollar. And coupled with that, we really would like to reclassify the position of academy director. The academy director right now is a point-five director position and point-five teaching position. While it's a point-five teaching position, this director, the director doesn't teach, that's, it's how they're paid. And quite honestly, 80% or more of the person in that position is really doing responsibilities toward directing. I started to talk about the fact of the, the goals of the academy, which is, is centered around really raising the level of expectation on the part of students, really working to get kids to graduate and to graduate legitimately, meeting all of the, of the requirements, and, you know, and, and really having kids think in terms of their future beyond high school. And what we see this position as doing is not only continuing that work, but that we would also see the director would be working overseeing the, what's called the after-school homebound program that, that takes place at the academy. This would be primarily for kids who are expelled, who come into the academy from 2:45 to 4:45. So this person would be serving as the administrator for that program. And also writing the Title I grant, which is a Herculean task that has to be done every year, and every year we usually get some help from, from an individual outside the system. We would like to bring that in so that this could be taken over fully by the director of the academy to write and monitor that grant each year. So that's the academic pieces that we are seeking. Beyond the classroom, there are some safety and school climate improvements that we seek. First and foremost, we are requesting a new position, a security coordinator. This security coordinator would be a person who would supervise and direct all security services in, or in issue, I'm sorry, security issues within the school system. So they would ensure that we are in compliance with all of the mandates from the state, and in all honesty, security has taken a, a new, a new level of importance and attention since Sandy Hook and other tragedies that have occurred across the nation. And there are more and more mandates that are coming down from the state relative to school security. This person would also oversee all crisis response plans and drills in each of the schools. You know, we have, we have new incident, incident management manuals. Thank for that for a second, I am out. Incident management manuals that outline all of the procedures and protocols that have to be followed in given emergency situations. This person would help and work with principals to make sure that those procedures and protocols are being followed as they should. Certainly, this person would be interfacing with the police department. This person would also coordinate all infrastructure improvements for security in the 14 schools. They would make plans for the future. We've spoken to both the district security work group, which is comprised of the firemen and, and policemen, the school system, and is chaired by Bill Richards from Emergency Management. We've spoken with the committee, and we've also spoken with the police chief, and both are 100% supportive of this kind of a position being put into place. And there are more and more districts that are moving in this direction. And again, security, security and the attention that it's given, which is a really good thing, has changed, it's just changed significantly from five, 10 years ago. We are also asking for school, two school resource officers. We have, currently have four in the system. We have one at law, we have one at foreign, we have one at West Shore that does about 85% at West Shore and 15% at the academy. And then we have one that is split between East Shore and Harborside. And what we would like to do is to have one of these new resource officers be for the middle school, so we would have one in each of the three middle schools instead of having one split. And then we would also like to have one assigned to the elementary schools. We know it would be a different kind of a role because they're not necessarily going to be in a particular building for, you know, two, three days, et cetera, but it's the idea that there would be a resource officer that would really develop a relationship with the elementary schools and really work with the principals and work with situations that occur within the schools themselves. And lastly, we are requesting three school greeters for the middle schools. This is a position that we requested a year ago. The greeters, any of you that have been in the elementary schools know, and I think the principals would attest to it as well, the greeters have been an invaluable position at the elementary level. To have someone right there at the front door with a set of eyes greeting someone face to face as they come into the building. And we would like the same thing for the middle schools. The middle schools are the only schools in the district that do not have either a greeter or a security guard. And the design of the middle schools are such that a person entering the building, the way that the offices are, you have, the secretaries are nearly removed from someone walking into those buildings. So we would really love to see greeters be in each of those schools. So those are the safety and climate needs. And lastly, we have some operational needs. One is East Shore with the renovation that has taken place there and the addition, has 2,100 additional square feet in that building, and it really needs an additional custodian.
21,000.
21,000, I'm sorry, 2,100, I said 21,000, makes more sense, square feet. And then in, in the interest, long-term of, of wanting to contribute to savings in the district, we would like to purchase a special education van and then pay to hire a special ed van driver. We have three special education vans right now that we own in the district, and they transport students. We would like to purchase a fourth one. Part of our costs for special ed transportation, well, part of the reason why our cost for special education transportation is so high is that unlike Durham where we enter into a contract, that, a three-year contract, and it's, you know, locked in for three solid years, in special education, we have to go out annually for the contract because the needs change with respect to our students. And so we are quite honestly at the mercy of the vendors. And our thought is that if we could purchase another van that would help transport more students, these are special vans, that again, we're putting out ultimately $60,000 for the van and the van driver, but over the course of a few years, we will actually, actually save the, the district some savings because that van not only can transport some students within district, that van could transport, for example, if we had a student who was placed at, outplaced at Orange, that's close enough that that person could really do, could take the student there, et cetera. So that's the request that we thought operationally would really help the system long-term. We total all of the budget requests that include the elementary reconfiguration, our academic improvements, our operational needs, and our safety and school climate needs, we are asking for $2,386,000 for these four areas, which again, if we did not, were not able to reduce the budget anywhere, would, would raise the budget significantly higher. As I indicated to you before, the good news is, is that the majority of these costs, everything that we requested, will be covered through the reallocation and reduction of funds from the existing budget. And so let me highlight those savings. Let me begin with staff reductions. All of you know that our enrollment continues to decline, so we know that we are going to be able to reduce 13.4 regular education teachers in the system and 5.0 special education teachers, which right there is over $1 million in reductions in staffing. We will also, in the reclassification of the academy, because there, that is a point-five teaching position, that gets reduced out of the academy, which is the equivalent of $30,000. And then while we want to hire four full-time media aides, we would eliminate the part-time media aid positions that exist in the budget right now, it seems like $40,000. So in staff alone, we have a savings of $1,174,000, again, from the existing budget. Transportation, we have savings. We, we have already anticipated that with the reconfiguration, we will need fewer buses. So that's a reduction of $150,555. And that we will also have some savings in gasoline because of a new fueling arrangement between Durham and actually the city of Milford around the costs of the, the gasoline. And obviously, the, the price of gasoline has dropped, and so that's contributing to the savings as well. We have savings in utilities, equipment, and curriculum work. So let me begin with energy conservation. I think most of you know that we have been involved in a contract for four years with what used to be known as Energy Education and is now Synergistic, and every year for the four years, we have paid them $253,200. That's been our fee that we've had to pay them each year for four years, that was part of the contract. Well, that contract ends in June, so we have that amount that we know is going to be saved, $253,200, but we wanted to take some of that money and keep it in the budget to apply to new energy efficient infrastructure within the school system and so for some, and also for some upgrades. For example, lighting, LCDs?
LCDs.
Yes, LD, okay, LD light, LCDs. Okay, you know what I'm talking about. And so instead of reducing it all, what we did is, is that we reduced a part of it. And so you see that some of the, so the savings were, were suggesting from that is $126,000. We also, because of your incredible support a year ago, were able to purchase so many computers for the school system that we actually are able to reduce that line item this year in as far as new purchases going forward. So that's been reduced by $422,000. And then also the support that you gave us in the area of curriculum work, which enabled us to do a significant amount of curriculum work last summer, and even some of it during the school year, we are able to reduce that curriculum line item by almost $120,000. So that's a total of $668,000. So if you look at the total amount of savings between staffing and the other non-staffing areas, it's just over $2 million that we found within the existing budget. And you can see then on the next slide, so what our major costs are that have been outlined in this PowerPoint, $2,386,000, and then the amount of savings that we have found to offset that, $2,012,566. So we, we worked extremely hard to be able to find savings to offset, again, the requests. We always give you two views of the overall budget. This is a view by category, and you can see how the breakout is. Interestingly enough, the salaries at 71% is actually slightly lower than a year ago. It was at 71%, but it was 78 point, higher than 0.25%. So that gives you that, that view. So that gives you that, that view. You also then, there is a view here which breaks it down by the major objects. And I would just point out, take a look at the salaries. These are salaries overall for the entire school system. The percent change is a one point three, five nine percent, which is very low. I would also point to transportation. Overall, it's a negative point eight percent increase, zero point eight, excuse me. So just to give you an idea of what we were able to do, again, to be able to bring the entire budget in at two point one nine percent. So what I want to state to you is that I really believe that this budget makes possible the reconfiguration of the elementary schools to PK five, but does it, having put students and their needs first, as well as staffing needs, and doing it such that there should be equity across all eight schools in resources as well as staffing. And the budget also is sustaining and strengthening our buildings and our operations, again, around seeking to continuously improve. Mark Twain said, "Out of the public schools grows a great nation." I would say out of the public schools grows a great Milford. So we ask your support. We thank you for listening, and we are more than willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Pizer. We have questions tonight, Dr. Pizer. As you know, we're going to have our budget workshops on Wednesday and Thursday this week, too.
Can I make more sense to hold off those questions to Wednesday? Because we can get into some of these.
Well, I think Dr. Pizer had asked for any questions, specific questions that you know now, that she have them in advance, so that she would be prepared to provide answers on Wednesday. I think she had hoped they would come in writing.
They can't, I mean, if you have questions tonight, if you have questions, I would ask them. If they can answer them, they will. If they can't. Right. If we can answer them right now, if we can't, we certainly can, we will have them ready as best as possible for Wednesday evening's workshop. And if not, then if people want to shoot us questions via email, then we will try and get those responded to by Wednesday, and if not, certainly by Thursday.
I heard, I saw some other hands up there, so if someone else.
Questions? Mr. Sadie?
Thank you. If you look at page five of the presentation, which is nineteen and a half teachers are going to be needed, and that was broken down pretty clearly. Then you go to page twelve, there should be thirteen point four less teachers. Can you give an explanation why thirteen point four less teachers? Is it simplistic? If not, we can wait till.
Sure. No, I can talk with you about the fact that the decline in teachers is primarily due, is due to decline in enrollment. So we, if you look at the enrollment, what is happening is, is that the largest number of students are now in the middle and in the high school. And what is happening is, the enrollment then is starting to decline, actually now six through twelve, beyond the elementary. It's been primarily elementary in the last several years, but that decline now is moving up through the grades. So those positions, those are not elementary positions in general. The elementary, we need sixteen classroom teachers. So I don't know if that helps it. Mr. Cummings, can you add to that at all?
No, I think specifically the decline is now primarily at the middle school, although both of our high schools, if you look at the numbers, are down approximately a hundred students over the past two years. So there is room for staffing reductions, as Dr. Pizer said, at six to one.
So that's sixteen teachers, elementary teachers, the plus sixteen are elementary and the minus thirteen point four are middle school and high school.
The, I would only add to that that there's an additional three point five, we estimate an additional three point five specialist.
Right. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Dr. Goldwirken?
Yes. I have a couple of different questions. In terms of the additional teachers that are going to be needed at the elementary level, have you considered mixed age classrooms at all?
Well, we have it in one school. Do you want to speak to that?
At Live Oaks right now, there is a, I'm sorry, give me a bit of, multi-age, thank you. Link on the name of the program. But that requires the, it's a grade one coupled with a grade two classroom. But it doesn't, doesn't give us any opportunity to reduce the FTE in that building. So we would, from a curricular perspective, we were not prepared for a true multi-age classroom perspective. The other thing we, as we look at it, I don't believe would lead to any staffing reductions, even if we could do it, because the number of students based on our board guidelines for class size determines a lot of the staff, the elementary staff.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of just looking at and calculating, you know, just rough calculations. If you go back to combining the K two and three five for a school, so if you've got five kindergarten teachers at Live Oaks, for example, now, and then we're going to put kindergarten in Orchard Hills, say they're, become matched, the five doesn't break evenly, so we're going to need three kindergarten teachers in each of those buildings. But, so a rough calculation gave it that for each of the matches, you would need four new classrooms. So four times four gives the sixteen. But if you, when we equalize the numbers, it may make sense, just from the economy of scale, sense to look at putting in a multi-age classroom or two in each of the schools. So it's just a suggestion. My other question is the number of math coaches and literacy coaches you have now at the elementary school level.
We have eight literacy coaches and eight numeracy coaches, one in each of the schools.
One in each school, okay. And in terms of the new specialists for the reconfiguration, you're, you're looking at three additional ones. Can you provide some more background and information as to why you think you're going to need that?
Sure. It's a math problem. There's sixteen additional classrooms. Roughly to do this, I figured on three kindergarten, three grade one, three grade two, and so on. And what I started to do then was say, well, kindergarten class requires, each kindergarten class, three, let's say there's three extra kindergarten classes, that would require six extra periods of art, three extra periods of music, an extra period of PE, and an extra, one period extra each of the media. And you have to do that for each grade because each grade has a rather unique combination of a specialist. Fifth grade is the opposite. Fifth grade has a single period of music, two periods of PE, a period of art, and a period of media. So depending on the total number of courses or additional classes at every grade level, essentially what I did was calculate each grade out and then add that up, and it came out to three point five additional specialists. It's going to be a combination of art, music, and PE. The media specialist will be covered because we have full-time media specialists in each of our elementary schools. So it's primarily, if you wanted to break it down, one point two art, one point two music, and one point two PE, but it won't shake out exactly that way. And it'll be spread over the eight buildings depending on where the increases are, are needed.
Okay. So if we could get some more background information on how you calculated that, I think that would be helpful.
Mr. Whiskeman?
Just curiosity, who, you had a coordinator position there, you know, trying to, sorry, page ten, the security coordinator, who does that individual, who do you expect that individual to report to? Would that be operations or would that be directly to the superintendent? At what level is that?
It would be to Mr. Richatelli.
To the operations manager? Operations, okay. Thank you.
Want to go down to this side now?
I suppose we're going on.
Oh, okay.
Would it be possible for the next meeting to just have the calculation of how much the percentage increase would be without the reconfiguration costs?
Yes.
Is that it? I'll email the rest.
I emailed Dr. Pizer my questions that I expect that we'll talk about on Wednesday. And I have questions on the Roman numeral pages specifically, but that can wait till we go through those, you know, through the budget a little bit more.
If you want to email them to us, whichever is easiest for you.
Okay, okay. But we don't have to do it tonight. It's too, it's too detailed, I think, for tonight's meeting.
Mr. DeRosa?
Yeah, can you explain again the individual roles and the separation of the assistant/teacher leaders as opposed to the principals? And what kind of payback has the current four assistant teacher leaders positions in schools today given to our district as a whole? In other words, what, where are those facilities, are those education departments lacking by not having assistant teacher leaders in that facility? Maybe just a little information of, you know, sort of like if it's not broke, don't fix it. Are they really that worse off, or are the other schools doing that much better? So there's a requirement of those four, you know, four people.
Sure. Can we answer that on Wednesday?
Sure.
Okay. And I know that there will be, some of the elementary principals will be at the Wednesday meeting as well.
And I'll, because I didn't have this, I'm going to, I'm going to pass my questions from what you handed out.
Sure.
I want to go to the other salary requests. And if we can get a breakdown, when you say, sorry.
Could you give the, are you going to the books?
The big book.
Could you give the page number?
The original page number.
It's in the letter.
It's in the letter.
Okay. So which, which others, are you looking at the summary?
Yeah, the salary request, I think it's.
The academic support specialist, the guidance council for those?
Yeah, it's the second page of detail. So the first one had to do with classroom teaching and support. Second, on the top of the page, other salary requests one time, non-salary costs one time. It's in the very beginning of the book.
It's the second and third page end of the letter.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. You're requesting seventy-five thousand dollars in overtime tied to reconfiguration to cover custodial maintenance of school building over time. Do you have more of a breakdown of the specifics of how that bucket of seventy-five thousand dollars is spread amongst the different work that they're requiring in the reconfiguration? Not asking for that now, but a little more explanation. And for the forty thousand dollars for the IT temporary help to move computers, what, my assumption would be is that, that because these current facilities, maybe the K two or three, three five already have labs, and they don't have individual computers in the individual rooms themselves, so based upon other than give or take maybe fifteen or twenty overall enrollment for the building itself, would the correct presumption be that those labs would stay the same with the number of computers in them? And if that is the assumption, then what is the, what is the total number of computers being moved or smart boards or other technology that is going to cost, you know, that value that you're assigning to it? Does that make sense?
And, no, it's a good question. Just as a clarification, that forty thousand dollars includes the six-month secretary.
Yeah, I, yeah, maybe my question should have been is clarification of how that forty thousand is broken between the first letting and the second one.
Sure.
And you said before that this temporary secretary or the six-month secretary would begin from April to September?
Well, that's what we were kind of thinking, you know, assuming that, you know, right now, registration, kindergarten registration begins in late March or early April.
We'll begin in March. It's going to have to start.
Was it March, it's the beginning of March?
Okay, March, March. So that's what we were thinking, you know, spring through, and then we thought September because there's always families that come in in September. That was our thought.
And I don't know if you have those number, and I know it's somewhere in the documentation you've given us over the last year or so. But is there a increased expectation of number of students being enrolled that's been done last year through the previous years? I mean, are we expecting a huge influx? Or is it something that really could be done by the current secretaries of those buildings?
Well, what you need to know is the current secretaries aren't in over the summer.
I understand.
So that's part of the difficulty, this is that they're not in. So we're hoping to bring them in like two weeks. But it's, again, the, we can.
So would you, would you bring the current secretaries in earlier than the normally come in? Is that what?
Well, but we, our hope would be, for example, is that maybe we would bring them in a week earlier, maybe we, they'd have them stay a week at the end of the year. Because again, even, you know, even kids' files are going to have to be moved, in the sense of, you know, any school is not going to hold on to all of their kids because some of their kids are going to be moved.
And are those paper files or electronic files?
There's paper files.
They're paper files. The permanent records are still on paper. There'd be.
Some coordination of where those will.
And that, on the assumption that nothing else changed, half the files, in a sense, would have to go to another school. But given the complexity of then of the redistricting with the possibility of what that might mean for some of the students, never mind their files, that's one of the bigger aspects of the security of those files, making sure that records, in other words, are maintained over the course of the summer. In addition, to speaking to the need for the six-month secretary, we're in a position right now, as the board well knows, that when people come to register for kindergarten, we're going to have folks coming into schools that, first of all, only half our schools currently hold in kindergartens. Secondly, that we're not sure that when people come to register for their students for kindergarten, what they think may be their kindergarten school may not be their kindergarten school depending on how the redistricting goes. So one of the pieces that we want to be conscious of as we work with the public is not providing any false leads as to what your school will be. By bringing it to central office, we're going to, I think, be able to systematize the process a lot more cleanly and provide parents with better information. That will get us through the registration process, and then we're going to have to look at the orientation process in May, which is going to present another set of challenges, particularly for those four schools that don't right now have a kindergarten classroom. So there's, and there's a number of other challenges that come with the K five return for the secretaries. Again, there'll be a whole lot of new staff in buildings, there'll be preparation of staff binders and manuals, things that normally right now are taken for granted are going to have to be changed. The principals are going to have to reconfigure their buildings by setup of classrooms, making decisions about where the specialists will go, which will impact where the computer labs will go, but also what hallways will house certain grades, what just makes the most sense for a building layout, which is going to have further impact on the distribution of supplies, materials, furniture during the course of the summer. So there's, there's a lot of work that comes with this that even once the desks and the sets are put in place, are going to require the principals and their secretaries to work together over the course of the summer.
Can I just piggyback on that? So the forty thousand dollars is for an IT person, temporary IT. So the $40,000 is for an IT person, temporary IT help over the summer, the six-month secretary to handle central registration for kindergarten, and then the two, bringing in the secretary, all of the elementary secretaries for two weeks during the year?
No, that piece is in the first paragraph, $75,000.
Oh, that's up there, okay, very good.
Ms. Glenn, just, you said, I think you said one IT person.
Well, I don't mean one, but.
Okay, that would be a number.
Just in general, IT. So it's the $40,000 is IT and then the central registration secretary.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
You answered one of my questions during the presentation, so. The page that, let me think here, non-salary costs, the page right after that. So it's the one that shows the summary of moving expenses, building projects, so forth. You mentioned here about $20,000 for additional network wiring and alterations that we have, again, the other detailed requests of, how did you came up with that?
Well, I can tell you, that's an anticipated cost. Again, depending, so much of this work is dependent on how the number of classrooms per grade configured to each particular building. So one of the things that we're conscious of is we're going to need to increase our access points in certain parts of certain buildings, particularly if they hold grades or they now hold computer labs. We're going to have to, we're going to work with the principals to minimize costs around this. In other words, we want to make sure that any moves we do make are the right moves to make from a structural point of view. But we're estimating that based on, you know, kind of experiential piece. We're going to have to do some hard wiring, we expect, in certain buildings. Rooms that currently do not have, smart boards are going to require network drops, you know, and a hard electrical wiring to bring outlets to ceilings and things like that. So, I mean, an additional, an additional 16 classrooms alone, some of those rooms will have smart boards, but if they don't, the wiring for a smart board usually costs between $400 and $500 right away. So that, that goes a long way to, you know, some of those dollars.
Just to connect it to the network?
No, it's the, we don't have electricity in life, you know, our, as you know, the rooms are older and they don't have a sufficient power grid. So there's going to, there may be some upgrade on the panels, but primarily it's the work around the front of the rooms and in the ceilings for the outlets.
Okay. All right, but any more, any other detail you can provide on that? I mean, that's, that helps me clarify. Security and climate. You mentioned about the security coordinator and also you mentioned about the state now has mandated safety committees being placed in each school. First question that is, and this may be my lack of understanding, is who's on the safety committee now in each facility? We don't have anything in each facility.
No, we do.
And who's on the safety committee in each building? I would assume the building principal.
Yes, it's mandated by state law now. And off the top of my head, and the principals that are here can probably help me out, but it has to be a building administrator, a teacher, somebody from the mental health staff, a social worker, psychologist, the police officer, firefighter, and a parent. Can I get them all?
And the school nurse.
Well, the school nurse would fall under this, the mental health part of it. So that's, those are the ones that are mandated and anyone else that the principal names necessary.
So it's not one of those positions per school, but, you know, like you could have a person who's fire or handle multiple schools? Or is it individual committee for each individual school?
The student, I think he's on the safety and security.
Oh, right, okay.
They're on the occupational.
Right.
Each school has to have its own committee. So there may be a police officer, there may be a serving on more than one committee, I don't know that.
That's what I'm asking.
And there is.
Okay.
There is.
Fire.
If the school has an SRO, the SRO logically would be the police officer. If they don't, then the police department has assigned a police officer to each school. Same thing with the fire department. There are three fire inspectors and they're split up between all of our 14 schools.
And those police officers that, and I'll just take elementary because they don't have any SROs, they're going there for practicing lockdown drills, checking any physical issues with the building, you know, dealing with any complaints that someone might have seen someone that they don't know on the property or whatever else, but that's their responsibility to report back to the safety committee and credit. Okay. You say a growing number of districts have done, how many other districts have established a security coordinator?
We can provide you with the information that we have.
Appreciate it. I'll save a couple of those questions for email. And again, this is just my own personal, and maybe I'm just having a difficult wrapping my head around this. But, you know, the first line you say, "Their security in all systems across the state has risen to new heights post Sandy Hook." And I'm not in no way making light of the issue of Sandy Hook. But I take it from a position where a student can defend or not defend themselves. And does the system enhance or support that? And when you're talking about kids in elementary, they're less likely to be able to defend themselves. So, and this is my opinion, that I think the whole approach we took to SROs was been wrong and we should have addressed from the elementary and worked up through the high schools. Mainly because if we're looking at Sandy Hook as an example, it was that grade or that age group that was affected and it created the national concern. If we had made this change when we had the Columbine issue, then it would have been the high school and worked our way down. So maybe it's just my understanding, but, and I don't think you can answer this, but I just wanted to voice that opinion because, you know, for this last year, we've had no SROs that have been signed to any elementary schools. And the only comment I make is the only thing stopping someone from coming in is a greeter. And to me, that's a problem. It's a concern. And I just want to state that opinion that, you know, I'm all for putting more SROs in and take away from other areas to ensure that that happens. So again, and I made this statement last year, if I have to give up two or three media agents or two or three greeters that already have like functions in a facility to get more SROs in elementary, I'm going to be for that. I just want to let you know that.
I think it's important to understand what the intent of the SRO position was back when it was first implemented, which wasn't for security, so to speak. It was more of a holistic, correct me if I'm wrong, or help me, it was more of a holistic position to, you know, work with students to be more preventative in terms of, you know, bullying and things of that nature, rather than, I mean, the high schools have security guards and the other schools don't. So it's more a function of a security guard to deal with security issues going, you know, people going into the schools and stuff like that. The SRO provides a, you know, because they're there, if something happens, they're there. But that, the intent of the SRO program was not for security per se. Am I wrong saying that?
No, you're correct. I think the fact that the term is school resource officer, it's to be a resource to students and staff. And the resource could be in the form of bullying prevention, it could also be in the form of conflict management, it could be in the form of, it could be mental health pieces that, you know, a school resource or officer may do. It's also, you know, education.
Truancy.
Truancy. And clearly, having the officer in the building, it brings a, some sense of, you know, another person who understands the issues of security and breaches of security maybe more than the average person does. But that's not necessarily their primary role. I mean, they're really to become part of the staff and really work on behalf of students. Recognizing that they are a police officer, as part of the Milford public, I'm at Milford Police Department.
My recollection from one of our recent meetings was, I think, Mr. Richatelli outlined the, surprising, to me, it was surprising the level of coverage that the elementary schools were receiving from the police department in other, not formal SROs, but in other ways. They were, you outlined some pretty detailed coverage that the schools were, the elementary schools were receiving.
Yeah, the commander or the leader of the police department's special investigations unit, which oversees the SROs, that person really has been assigned as the liaison to all of the elementary schools. And I think that the elementary principals would tell you that they have his number.
On speed dial?
Yeah, and really is able to be, you know, has provided extraordinary resources where we otherwise, I don't know that many other school districts receive the same kind of priority that we do here in Milford, from the Milford Police Department.
We do also have, in the summer, and Mr. Whiskeman's suggestion, we're going to have an overview of the SRO program and kind of an evaluation of it. So, just in.
Yeah, again, I was just stating my opinion. You know, if we're going to use the word Sandy Hook, then that's, that's what that tragedy was about. It was a tragedy. And if we're going to use that, then in my mind, a police officer would have helped in this situation. I know maybe the schools have his number, but God forbid if something happens to two schools at the same time, we have a problem. So, thank you. I'll submit the rest.
All right, Mr. Baez, do you have any?
No, I'm good.
Gregor?
I just want to say I appreciate Dr. Fieser's careful analysis of the whole budget. I appreciate the time and effort everyone put into this. I appreciate the administration, administrators who are here tonight. And I just want the Milford community to know that we're all working together on this. And I'll save any questions I have for the workshop. Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Personally, I was surprised, plus I was surprised at the 2.19% Dr. Fieser, I mean, I have to say, I expected something much higher, given the redistricting and the reconfiguration. So I think you did an outstanding job on this. Other questions?
Do you have any?
Final questions?
Yes.
Given the fact that we're discussing tonight so many unknowns about the reconfiguration, over the next few months, we will have, we will have a lot more details about the reconfiguration and how the classrooms will be laid, how the students will be laid out in all of the schools. Would it be possible at some point to firm up some of these numbers that we, that may be guesses or estimates at this point? And if so, when could be a point in time where we could do that? I mean, obviously, we'd have to be after we vote on the budget, but I'd just be curious to see when we could have a true-up of some of these estimates that are in place right now.
Sure, I think that what we could say is, is that maybe the numbers that we really feel are pretty firm, of which I think there's a lot of numbers that are firm.
Okay.
And then where there is some room. You know, as far as the classrooms, I don't imagine that's going to happen until night.
Until we really get a final, two things that are dependent on the classroom numbers. One would be, two, one is the reconfiguration and the redistricting that occurs. The second is the, as always every year, is the number of students who enter in kindergarten. We base an enrollment projection on our current kindergarten numbers. As we talked about back in October, the kindergarten is actually, I believe it's slightly smaller this year than it was the year before, but because of where the students were, we needed four more teachers. So that really has a major impact on budget every year. And it's in the past when we've had to make adjustments, if we've had to add staff beyond what our projection is, we've had to make, the board has worked with us to find a corresponding area of reduction. We should know, I would hope, you know, really, it's got to be in April, because our intention and hope is, once the redistricting is finalized, is to then staff the district, particularly at the elementary level, because we want to move as quickly forward into the new year.
Okay.
So we'll address your question. We'll look at the numbers under reconfiguration and which ones we know are, you know, pretty solid, and then which ones, you know, might have some room.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Goldtorkin?
Just a quick question. Is it possible that we could get the actual enrollment numbers as of January 2015 in terms of grade, school, and number of classrooms we have right now?
Sure, we could do that.
So we'll pick up this discussion on Wednesday? Move on, Dr. Fieser. Do you have any other agenda items?
The next item on the agenda is the quarterly budget report.
Thank you, Dr. Fieser, Ms. Glenn, and the board. As you know, we come to, you know I sound like a record, once per quarter, but we do report to you and give you the numbers as to where we are with the budget on a quarterly basis. But as you know, we're constantly looking at the numbers on a weekly basis and sometimes on a daily basis. And so we provide you the numbers where we are at the halfway point in the budget. I can report to you that we will have a, barring any kind of, you know, completely unforeseen circumstances, we will have a balanced budget at the end of the year. We don't see any areas of major concern. There are a couple of areas that I will point out to you that we continue to watch very closely. The first one, as I mentioned to you at the end of the first quarter, teacher salaries, we are running a considerable surplus in that account. And the reason for that is because of the unexpectedly high number of retirements and resignations last year, which meant that more experienced teachers, higher on the salary grid scale, were the ones who retired or left the district. And younger teachers at less cost have come in. And so we are, as I mentioned, we are running a surplus in that account and we'll continue to watch that. The utility accounts, electricity and natural gas, we're watching those.
Do you have the numbers?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, 4100 and 4101. We're showing those right now as being fully encumbered for the year. But the, those accounts are running higher than expected and the major driver of that, as we mentioned to you when we gave the energy report, is East Shore Middle School. We're spending much more than we anticipated that we would. As we said before, the building is about a third larger than it was before. And not all of the controls are completely in place yet with the temperature controls. That's one of the punch list items that Mrs. Federico talked about before that has not been completely turned over to us yet. And so not a major concern for us, but we are watching those very closely. We think we will have a shortfall in, a slight shortfall in electricity and natural gas, again, mainly due to East Shore. Accounts 51, 5101 through 5103, those are the special ed transportation accounts. Those are always in deficit, but I always remind you that we are eligible for excess cost state reimbursement grants at the end of the year, as well as accounts 5600 and 5601. Those are also showing in deficit as they always do. But again, those, the excess cost grants, we anticipate will fully cover those by the end of the year. And that's really it. Another one on the positive side is the gasoline and diesel. That, as you know, the. That, as you know, the new arrangements Dr. Fieser talked about with Durham having their own fueling system and for diesel fuel, and the city allowing us to use the public works gas pumps has saved us a considerable amount of money, and generally prices are down. So that account looks good also. So, other than that, we are where we should be with most of these accounts, and I'm happy to answer any questions. But the bottom line on all of it is that there are no major areas of concern for us at this time.
Just one quick question. You say, gas prices going lower. Is there any anticipation that, I mean, obviously, it's great that the prices are going lower. And I really appreciate that, and hopefully get everything to do with that with a patch on the back. But do we anticipate those going up at all? And is there been any buzz that, you know, maybe next year, they're not gonna be as low?
Well, see, the thing to remember, it's a, it's a good point, and we lock in at a price, the city goes out to bid once a year for diesel and gasoline, and they go out in November. So, the price is from November to November. So, we're locked in at November's price. Actually, right now, what they could buy at the retail pumps is lower than what we're paying, because we locked it in November. But that's gonna change. And it's also much, it's also less than what we budgeted for, because we budgeted at a number that came in much lower, because the prices had already begun to go down, but we're not feeling, but in November, we weren't feeling the full effect of where they are now. So, we're locked into that price until November. Still better than what we had budgeted for. And then November next year, we'll see where we are again.
Other questions on this? Mrs. Federico?
I have one. You mentioned the lower base in teacher salaries. Was that lower base than used to create next year's budget?
Next year's budget, we took into account actual teachers that we have today.
Okay.
And then factored in what we normally have for retirements, which is 18 to 20 retirements. And we expect that it will smooth out again. Last year, as Mrs. Capazin talked about during her report, was an extraordinary year for retirements. And probably the main reason for that was because it's a new contract that's coming in, and the benefits are not, are not quite as good as they were in the previous contract. So there was a lot of retirements. If people were right at that age where they might stay a couple more years or they might not, they probably opted out because they didn't want changes in the, in the benefits.
So we have a lower average this year than, lower average salary than prior year?
Questions for Mr. Richitelli? Okay, so now, I guess we can move on.
The next item on the agenda is the, is a policy we're bringing forward for the first reading. It's a concussion policy and administrative regulation. And Mr. Spalici is here to speak to this, and we also have both athletic directors, Mr. Vitelli and Mr. Savilla, who are here, who certainly would be able to answer some questions. And again, this is for a first reading, so it will be, again, revisited at our next meeting.
So, what you've been given a copy of is response to Public Act 1466, which was passed last year. It was an addition to concussion legislation that's been passed the last couple of years. I believe that the first one was in 2010, there was an additional one in 2013, and then this latest revision in 2014. What it does state is that boards, town boards do have to have a policy regarding concussion in place. The concussion policy's been crafted primarily using the state, Public Act is the guide, including the CIAC language in terms of protocols, which is our athletic organization, in terms of protocols and responsibilities. We were very careful also to make sure that this reached out to all of our staff members as well, which is required not just our athletic directors and our coaches, but we'll also be having training for our teachers and other staff members. Additionally, this does fit in very well with what we're talking about, because we are talking about the safety and climate of children. This extends from K to 12, because it will encompass all teachers. We do have a reported structure in place with the Department of Health, where we are getting monthly updates in terms of the concussion numbers for the K-12 level that extends to outside school activities, with students reporting when they come to school of headaches or dizziness from outside activity. The teachers are asking questions such as, well, how did you hit your head? What happened? Was it soccer practice? And then there, being referred to the nurse for medical attention. There are protocols in here that also streamline the way information is given between the Board of Health and ourselves in terms of reporting monthly, so it's not difficult for us to get those numbers. And then additionally, the way that the information can be given to teachers in terms of making adjustments for students who are experiencing post-concussive issues in that classroom.
Question?
Yes, Mr. DeRosa?
Oh, sorry. I see that this is, the intent of this policy is that, the assumption is that concussions occur through sporting activity? Is that the intent of what this policy is?
That was the initial intent by the state, that it covers primarily sports activities. In the training that we're developing for our teachers, we'll also be going over classroom activity, students falling over chairs, sitting their head on the desk.
So will that be included in this policy?
That'll be updated in the AR policy, in the AR portion. The policy that the state, that CAE gave us as a model primarily focused on the athletic portion of the Public Act. We extended it through the AR to make sure that it covers all of our staff members as well.
What is AR?
The AR is the academic, the administrative regulation. That's how, that's how the policy gets implemented at the school.
One of the things we talked about in the development of this policy was that we had to move beyond the common perception that concussions only happen during sporting activities, and that we had to be aware of students of all ages, that something, when students reported getting hit in the head or student fell, as you said in class, we had to raise folks' awareness of all teachers, all staff involved with this. So we've talked about the idea that essentially at the beginning of each year, like we do with bloodborne pathogens and other health concerns, we're gonna have to develop a training module for all subjects.
So again, you're just doing this because CAE provided a model, and you're a model they have.
The model that CAE provided, that they developed with the CIAC, was specifically around sporting activities.
And that's probably because that's where the most experienced concussion is.
Right. So what we wanted to do is make sure that through our administrative regulation, we extended that also to all of our staff members.
It's also tied to, if you look on the agenda form itself, Public Act 14-166, so that, which is quoted here, and it talks about each local or regional board of education should implement such a plan by utilizing written materials, et cetera. And if you go through 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, current best practices in the prevention and treatment, I'm sorry, 4, the proper procedures for allowing a student who has sustained a concussion, a concussion to return to athletic activity. And this was before the legislature, a year ago, there was huge debate as to how comprehensive should policies be within schools, because how much are schools able to monitor and oversee all of this? And in fact, there was a movement to include recreation, town recreation, departments that the policy would apply to them, et cetera. And, and it was like, whoa, timeout here. You know, the greatest number of concussions do come from athletics. There is, there is a recording, a reporting piece, if my memory serves me correctly, that is beyond athletics within schools. Any student who, who receives a concussion has to be reported in the same way that an athlete has to. And so that is part of the policy. But, but there was, the legislature's pulled back and the primary focus is around athletics, but it does expect that if a student does get a concussion for something else, the kid falls and hits their head on the, on the cement in a, you know, in a walkway or something like that, that that would also be treated in a similar fashion, and we would have to report that.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just asking from an inception, because, you know, my daughter was an experience of this, and Mr. Vitelli, and it says there was one year that she actually had two known concussions that dealt with through sports. And the whole concussion incident with her happened in Parsons Gym through a rec basketball game.
Interesting, okay.
And this happened back in seventh grade, where she actually kept out of school for five months. She had to be nursed back into an environment where, I mean, there was a whole protocol they had to go through. The pediatrician brought her through that whole process. Couldn't even walk upstairs. And through that initial concussion, it brought her over into high school, so she was more susceptible to incurred concussions. And simply like, if you walk up by someone and banged up against her, you're more prone once you get one. And I, as a, as a personal experience of this, because it affected our family, and I would like to see if we can include the rec environment, mainly, or extracurricular activities from a sporting perspective, at least have wording in here, because if a student does go out and plays travel sports, whatever else, and they run into an issue, that we're covered as a district, because, you know, we want to make sure that the student's protected if they come back and goes, well, how you doing? I have a little headache, whatever, da-da-da. You know, it has to follow through.
Part of the teacher protocol that's available on the CDC site speaks a lot about that. And one of the things that we were careful about putting in our AR was making sure that our teachers were trained to deal with students reporting injuries that happened outside of school. So it wasn't just, oh, that happened outside of school, we're not getting involved here. The immediate process is that they're referred to the school nurse. That's where the school nurse engages in the protocol, has been developed through the Department of Health, to work with the parent and the student to answer those questions. If it's determined that there is a concussion or a concussive-like symptom, that's when they're referred to the pediatrician, at which point we would either enter into a 504 meeting or develop a plan for reentry for that student. The teacher would be given that information. If you look at the AR under section F, one of the things it does talk about, the administration getting that information to a teacher in a timely fashion also to help the student reacclimate, but also it talks about the teacher reporting it to appropriate people if the student does report.
Okay. So, from our discussion, would it be fair to say that the protocol is the same once a concussion is reported, whether it's from a school-based activity or a rec-based activity?
Right.
Whatever happens after that is exactly the same?
It's pretty, especially on the teacher level. If there isn't an athletic trainer or somebody there to do more of an evaluation on site, if it's a school-based activity, there are trainers there, there are coaches there that can check for certain symptoms, make a more accurate prediction of what's going on, not to diagnose, but to just make an accurate, paint a more accurate picture. But the teachers will be given the same training, other staff members will also be given the same training.
Okay. So a challenge would just be that if it happens outside of a school activity, it may just be harder for the school to know about it?
Right. What we would, what we would express to our teachers is to err more on the side of caution. If a student is complaining of any sort of headache, if a student is putting their head down consistently in class, take the next step, give them a path to see the nurse. Nurses are trained health professionals, let them make that assessment, let them contact the parent to discuss what happened.
The good news is, is that this is not something that's brand new in the school system. I mean, the athletic directors can speak to the fact that you've been addressing concussions for the last few years, specific, because this is just the newest of the regulations that have come forth in the legislation.
They really started off 2010, is it, or?
Yes, 2010.
Was when, obviously, concussion became, you know, people were more aware of what's going on. There was courses that our coaches had to take certification. We had, the head director had to give a part to our coaches, but also our athletic trainer had to. And each year, the coaches have to keep their certification. And then this, this spring will be, the five-year period, so there's a new class that they're gonna have to take. And every year, you know, we learn more and more about concussions. And I mean, I think I, I mean, I know on four, and I'm sure in law it's the same thing, our parents are more aware of the symptoms, the athletes themselves are a lot more aware of the symptoms. And the days of, you know, well, you got a little dinger in your head, don't worry about it, you'll get through it, those days are, those days are over. I mean, it's serious, and I think that's really helped with the education.
Yeah, and I would say that the good thing here is that Milford is already ahead of where the, where the law is, where what's gonna take effect on July 1st, Milford's already doing, you know, again, all of our coaches have gone through the three-hour concussion course, they do an annual sign-off. All of our parents receive information, all parent student athletes receive information on warning signs and symptoms and return-to-play protocols. So we are already ahead of the game, you know, at least on the athletic, on the athletic part, as far as what's gonna take effect on July 1st.
Will the information sheet and consent form be updated periodically as you learn more? You'll add to that and update the?
Yes, that comes, that comes from, all the forms that we use come from the CIAC, our athletic governing body.
Mr. Whiskeman?
Yeah, I, I think this is a good focus, however, I also agree, at least into, to one concept that Mr. DeRosa's bringing forward, is that for the non-athlete who may be injured outside of school and who presents these symptoms, I would like to make sure that they're brought into the system, because it may be completely unrelated, they may never play athletics, but they may have had a car accident or a home accident or something. And, and they, they also need to be evaluated and treated and managed in terms, just a pure educational standpoint, even if they're not in the athletic program at all and don't play sports. So, to that extent, I think it's hard to express that, but there's a certain, you know, obvious focus on the athletics. And I think the, it's, it is likely that the overwhelming injuries that may occur are going to be athletic-related. Nonetheless, we will have at least some cases of some students who might otherwise be missed. And I'm happy to hear that you are, you're training the teachers, so any student under their purview, who is in the classroom, who exhibits these signs, will get to the nurse and be brought into the system. I just want to make sure that our policy kind of reflects that, that it's all-inclusive, no matter what the source of injury, when it becomes apparent to us that there's a problem. And of course, for the coaches, they're, they're gonna make a determination of whether their student can play or not, depending upon, you know, the protocols outlined.
So just two points that I did forget to mention, that do speak a lot more to the parents outside of athletics, is we do have an active website around concussion and symptoms for, that's accessible to all parents within the school system. Another thing that we've spoken about was putting the information from the parental consent sign-off, which is key symptoms to look out for, not just around athletics, but for students in general, would also be contained with the handbook under the athletic section. So that would make the information more readily available to all students and to all parents as well.
I can also say to you that I know I've been in meetings with the Health Department around this issue, because they also are developing their own policies for the nurses around concussions and, you know, protocols that would be followed, and obviously, the kind of education that the nurses would be doing inside individual buildings for not only students and their parents, but also their staffs.
So wouldn't it make sense to match that kind of policy?
Joan Campbell and I have actually been in discussion over this policy, in addition to the forms that the CIAC put out, the CDC put out, in terms of making sure that we're all on the same page. Let's go with Mark.
And just as a clarification, Mr. DeRosa, when you asked about, you know, CAE and the role of CAE, whenever there is a legislation is passed, we wait to receive sort of official, either model policies, you know, or kind of do's and don'ts with respect to establishing a policy, because that's where the expertise is. They've got their attorneys, sometimes they even turn to, like Shipman and Goodwin in Hartford, and ask to Shipman and Goodwin develop the bullying policy, for example, that we, that we use.
No, I understand. I was just, I was always a profession, you know, CAE provides a model, it's not set in stone that a district can adopt it and modify as long as it's.
That's true. It's a model.
And that's what I was trying to get to, to ensure that our district needs might be different from someone else's or whatever, and, you know, more enhanced.
I'm hearing that it's really the administrative regulation that addresses the non-student-athlete issues. Because one of the questions I had on the last page of, page three of this administrative regulation was under the teacher and school staff responsibility, where the second line, number one, the second line, where it says, safety procedures for any student. line, number one, the second line, where it says, "Safety procedures for any student in class." My question was, shouldn't that say student-athlete? So no, it should not, intended to be just students.
No, versus any student.
And so, were there any other questions, Mr. Sadi?
Oh, the, I'm sorry, Mr., last page?
Page three of the administrative regulation, the AR.
So page three of three?
Right.
Right.
F1, second, second sentence, it starts regarding the proper reporting and safety procedures for any student in class.
Okay.
Student, that's correct, the way it's worded. Mr. Sadi.
Thank you. To the chair, to whoever would like to ask this. I'm going to page 11 of the materials received today, and it's entitled page three of three, list of support policy. We've got the last paragraph, the board is required, do we have that in front of us? Board is required. My question is, who, number one, who is the board's at all? Us or the superintendent? So the term use of board does it? And then, I'm being hyper-tactical, but it says here, "Any other director will collect and report to State Board of Education," is that the state statute now that it must be done by the board or is it by the?
Designee. It should probably say the board's designee.
Okay.
Or the superintendent and her, her designee.
And then we get to the, the issue of the report shall contain, it says, comma, if known, I would suggest that it should be required, that a final report, whoever's going to be the designee should know what the cause of the extent and circumstances.
Sometimes the student or the parent reporting doesn't know what happened. So that's why that, one of the Department of Health categories is unknown injury, because the student may just be reporting, you're asking the student, how did this happen? I don't know. I just woke up, my head was hurting, you know, I'm not really sure. Sometimes they don't report what the actual cause was.
And then the last, the last question I have, and I do have a comment after that, is that with all the concerns about confidentiality, not only in the student realm, but also in the medical field, which is hip and all, I, does the name of the student ever get told? And if, and I see you shaking your head, no.
Not on the report.
Well, but no, does that get known to either the elect director in the facility that's an issue, or the coach that'll know that so-and-so student has received injuries that they didn't, they didn't know?
When a student is referred to the nurse for a concussive or believed to be concussive injury, part of the Department of Health protocol would be that the administrator is notified, so that if a 504 has to begin, they can begin with a process for reacquisition. Any athletic director, coach would be made aware if there is an athletic team because they would have to be withheld and protocol would have to begin. In terms of the state report, we only report number and school, we don't report name.
Okay. And the comment that if I could, please, the concern about concussions is so important, and I agree with what Mr. DeRosa said, Mr. Whiskeman said, I think that we have to be a bit mindful, if somebody's reporting an injury that occurs off-campus, so to speak, it did not occur in our buildings or in our property, let's say, they say, well, I got a knee injury that occurred in a car accident, we're going to be monitoring every single thing they do? No, just, if we go down that road.
Yeah, we can go down, pick out everything, have to watch out for everything.
Thank you.
Someone else over here have another question?
I just have one point for clarification, the same paragraph that we were just looking at. It says, "Beginning July 1, 2014," so was that effective last year?
There were certain parts of the legislation that became effective in 2010, 2013, 14.
Okay.
And that was all made part of the policy because it impacted things that had to happen in 2015.
So page 12, the AR, the first page of the AR, where it says, "July 1, 2010," that's correct as well? Other questions? Right. I have to, I had a hard time with this policy, following it, I have to say, I found it a little confusing. And I think there's, I think that there's a couple of, like, missed words and stuff, so I'll email those to you.
Sure.
There's just housekeeping, like, an ant here and stuff like that. But where it speaks to the, on page nine, you know, it speaks to the initial training course that must be completed, and then, and then the two, third paragraph down from there, it's the required refresher course. So it really wasn't clear to me, I really had to go back and read this, because this is a policy, the policies are meant for, really more for the, they're in our policy books, they're meant for parents, the public to be reading. So I had to go back and read this numerous times to kind of make it all gel for me. I'm still not sure that it has, I don't know if anybody else felt that way when they were reading it. So I don't know if there's anything that can be done to maybe make it a little bit more, I'm not sure how much of this you took specific, directly from.
Almost all of it.
Almost all of it, it's like verbatim almost.
We could go back through and look, I mean, there may be some pieces of it that could be moved into the AR as opposed to staying the policy. And sometimes, one of the things I was aware of was that there's no headers, which headers really help.
Yeah.
And so, you know, allow us to go back through.
Clean it up a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the one, two, three, the fourth policy relates to parents, and then all of a sudden, the last sentence is, "All coaches will complete training pertaining to the district's procedures." So I think that kind of belongs with what the coaches do, because then the next paragraph talks about required refresher course that really is only mentioned in one other place. I just found it really confusing to me. So, but I will email you the, the little housekeeping things. And then, so every parent and student must, on page 10, in that first paragraph, the last sentence, unless the student and athlete and his or her parent complete the concussive, concussion education plan. So is my understanding then that every parent and student must do this if they get hurt, or they have to do it once a year, or?
They do it once a year.
So every, every student, athlete, and their parent must complete a concussion education plan?
Well, that's part of the, that's the sign-off.
So all they're doing is reading the information and signing off that they read it, okay.
It's like a consent form or something, like a.
See, that wasn't really clear to me, what that was.
Like a student participation.
Similar.
An education plan is a little bit more in-depth than that, but I think of an education.
Because that will be included as part of the, Mr. Vitale and I talked about, the sports physical packets that are sent out. So that will, the sports physical packet, the parent permission form, and two copies of the concussion sign-off, one for the parent to keep, one to sign and get back.
Right, yes, Mr. Rosa.
At least at the high school, where does the athletic trainer play a role in this policy, unless I'm not finding responsible, do they have?
That's more in the administrative regulation.
I know it admits a lot about the coaching, but again, can't the athletic trainer start the process as opposed to a coach starting the process?
They could, but more likely than not, the coach is going to, I mean, could very well see that, obviously, it happened a lot through the trainer camp. But of course, the trainer has, I mean, all my coaches, if we maybe suspect a concussion, take our, take our, take the athlete to the trainer.
Okay.
And then the trainer, at that point, would immediately contact the parent. And then again, if the trainer's not on site, the coaches are required to contact the parent.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, so this is a first read, so it'll be back on our agenda next month for a second read and potential adoption.
Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And on our agenda here is the Human Resources Report, Mrs. Tadde.
Thank you. You have the open jobs that are posted, as well as the recommendations for new hires, for retirements and residents, and I think there's a cycle of appointments, just a couple this month.
I don't have much information to report this month, but would have any questions? I had a question on the job postings.
Yes.
December 2nd, lunch aids too, where it says, "Originally posted in May." Have those been unveiled all this time, or?
Um, no, probably reposted it and reposted.
Yeah, so somebody left, didn't have any luck in reposting it. Okay, all right. Yeah, I'm not sure where that, that language stays in there sometimes. I think it's usually a reposting though, like the Spanish teacher, we are still looking for a Spanish teacher, it was posted once, reposted, still looking. Questions? No questions? All right. Thank you. Do you have anything else under? All right, thank you, Dr. Caesar. Move on to consent agenda, Mrs. Ducey.
I will bet the Board of Education approves the following consent agenda items, disbursement report, and approval of the minutes for the December 8, 2014 business meeting and the December 15, 2014 special meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any new business anybody wanted to bring forward? Any board comment? Board comment? Okay.
I'll just make a short comment. I, like I said, I taught at Law on December 22nd, I had a great time teaching for Miss Rowley and Mr. Batson, he's a forensic expert, and I had a great time at that school. Thank you.
I know you're becoming a fixture there. All right, Mrs. Ducey, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Mr. DeRosa, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. So we'll see everybody on Wednesday. Yes. Bring your budget books. Yes. Bring your what?
Budget books.
Budget books.